Okay, good morning. I'm gonna call the budget work session to order. Linda, I'm going ahead and ask you to do roll call. Chairman Morgan?
Here.
Vice Chairman Chance?
Here.
Commissioner McClendon? Commissioner Lee? Commissioner Fuller?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Okay, Commissioners, as we've done the last couple of years, we are bringing you together to present you a proposed draft budget. The biggest expense in this year's budget is going to be, after a conversation with y'all, that we want to really retain and thank our employees. So we have put in a $2 an hour for full-time employees and $1.25 for permanent part-time. So I'm going to turn it over to Finance Director Alicia Thursday at this time to begin all the other details.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here, and we've got a lot of material to cover today, so I'm gonna go through it as quickly as I can. But the first thing I wanted to do was kind of let you know what the impact of the wage increases were, so you can keep that in mind as we're talking about the budget. If we did the $2 an hour increase for all the employees and for all full-time, $1.25 for permanent and part-time, the impact of Social Security and other benefits is going to be about $4 billion and seven point five thousand dollars.
Go one more time, so as far as Social Security benefits, that's total?
That's total, that's wages.
Okay, so what did I figure one more time for?
Four billion point seven five in round numbers. Now, there are a couple of other things that are going to impact wages if we agree to do these things, as we move through and all reiterate these as we move through the line lines. But we are asking for a few new positions. We also are funding some positions that have already been approved. So we approved 12 QRV drivers last year. The funding wasn't in last year's budget, but it is in this year's budget. So that's pushing that wage number up some. We also, at the last board meeting, agreed to fund a part-time CEO at an animal shelter. That was not in last year's budget, that is in this budget. In addition to those positions that have already been approved, we are asking for an additional person in IT to do focus on the technology at courthouse. We are getting ready to extend the pipeline running from the AV over there. And the judges have requested that we give them somewhere and people will focus on that equipment and focus on being there during court and making sure that equipment is running correct.
Okay, Alicia, I hate to interrupt you, but could you back up? What are we doing at the courthouse?
It's a full-time IT tech.
Okay, I got that.
And it's for the fifth, as we build out the fifth floor and we develop the things in there, we're doing a lot of IT upgrades and audiovisual upgrades. So the judges have asked that we have a tech dedicated to that operation. Now, that doesn't mean that's all they need to do. They can come to this building, they can go to College Street, they can do some other building work, but the majority of their work is going to be focused at the judicial center, making sure that these hybrid court proceedings are running the way they should, that all of our technology is working correctly, evidence can be presented the way it needs to be presented.
And then when we do the build-out of the top, that's gonna be that much more court services in the same facility. And the percentage probably of needing additional assistance, well, that will be even greater if you have more people in the same building.
That's correct.
Okay, so you're going to be, you'll be going, I mean, if we do that there, then we're gonna have to have the same kind of audiovisual stuff. From what I understand from the judges, they want to be able to do hearings and that sort of thing here in the, uh, can I say prison? In the jail, that's, uh,
That's right.
Have people at each end making sure everything's working.
Well, we've got a committed person at the chairman's office already that runs all the sheriff's office. I think that they will be able to handle the jail part of it, which will be good because they will be familiar with the technology. And then the person over here goes on vacation for a week and they will be able to come over here and fill. And I'm sure Jacob's really getting cross-trained in the city, so I'm sure he'll have other people in there that ain't there, but you'll have somebody that's running it at the jail full-time and somebody that's running it here full-time, and they'll be very familiar with the equipment to go back and forth. But no, I do not think that we will have to have an additional person at the jail. But that's a big question because that is a part of what they're trying to do. They have a hybrid meetings where, or hybrid hearings where they can bring people into the courtroom at the jail and actually participate in the hearing that's going on over here. Or at some other facilities around the state.
I think within the next month or two months, that we should be bringing you an RFP for the technology AV materials over there. We did go a while back to give them some ARPA funds to purchase TVs and things like that. But in the process of the fifth floor, we now realize what we can do for IT. You know, we did the security of the parking deck already. So one of the next RFPs will be the security within the building, and then also have an RFP for the technology. And of course, an RFP for the build-out. I think that's, Alicia, was I missing one? There may be a fourth one, but there's three things coming. But getting this IT person on that first to be part of coordinating that IT, so that's what that is.
My main thing is making sure, and I know Mr. Parsons is doing that, but the road where we were at before, where we really didn't have someone directing the department how we do, just making sure that that person is tying in on all these things that we're doing IT. And I'm sure that's happening, but that's my main focus, is that someone does a central head that understands technology. And as we are adding and doing all these additional branches, that that hub knows exactly and is making sure it's being facilitated regularly.
And I think that is, he's been in the meetings with the company that's working with ArchTech on what we need to do next door. And I know just being at College Road, daddy, or like two full days out at the London Road facility, getting the fire coming in and getting everything ready to start hooking IT equipment to it. So even though he is the acting director, he's very involved in the day-to-day young boys going on, especially on these big projects, he's spent a lot of time.
That's good.
So let me move through the other positions that we're asking for here and a couple of things that we're asking for additional. So in state courts, we're asking for a court part-time court coordinator. We have had a person in that position that's coordinating the public defender in the state court as a contract employee. And it's gotten to the point that we really need to have somebody whether it's five and a half hours and it's five and a half a time. So with doing that, we feel like I need to move from being a contract employee to actually being a part-time employee in the other county. That's not in Charleston State Court, but I'll, I'll do that when we get there. The solicitor has asked for an additional full-time victim advocate. We're required by the state to offer the victims someone to advocate on their pack. And the number of cases in the state court have escalated to the point that she needs an additional person there. Fire has asked to move their part-time administrative person to full-time. And Fire has also asked for an increase for the deputy chief to move from $72,000 a year to $85,000 a year. Pro late court has asked for an additional dollar and a half an hour for their deputy clerk. Their deputy clerk is paying about a dollar and a half less than the other deputy clerks in the other courts. So this would bring her up in line with the other deputy clerks in the other courts.
So in addition to the $2, this is a $7 fee?
That's correct.
We're going to back up. So Alicia's just doing a short version of what I was mentioning. So we're just kind of highlighting where the money's going first, the $2 and the $1.25. And then she's just pointing out these like nine positions. So she's just giving you a quick overview. And then when we go through it line by line here, you'll see again under the state court where it has again this person, she's just doing a highlight. We thought it might be easier to highlight, maybe we should just start with the first line.
Trying to keep up with all these people and I can't write it down.
Yes, they're in the, they're in this budget here. She's just doing a shortcut version of the expenses.
Yeah, I like what we're doing, so I don't want you to stop and I wouldn't go because I'm following what you're doing.
Okay, and wages was such a big part of this budget, the change in the budget. I really wanted to make sure that everybody was clear on the positions. And then, and I will pick it up when we go through it line by line.
So when we go line by line, you're gonna say, oh, there, this is a new person I'm talking about.
That's right.
Yes, she and I have this discussion, I want to do it at the end as a recap. She's like, no, she wants to do it at the beginning. So we're probably gonna do it at the beginning, in the middle, and then I'll get my recap again too.
Okay.
I'm gonna put it right, I can try to keep up.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's a full-time gymnastics coordinator requested by the recreation department. The gymnastics team has continued to expand. Our facility continues to draw more and more gymnasts here in the year. We've had several beats out there. It's really become a cornerstone of our community, in the recreation community and in the building welding facility. And we have more and more girls that are interested in doing contract things, so they need to make sure they're with the gymnastics. So that's just summary of the wages and kind of where we got, where we got things on those wages. Now, I will, I will start with the packet that says Carroll County Georgia General Fund Credit Budget. And I didn't, I didn't really make any notes on this. I used the, pretty much the same philosophy that we used in the past in that we, but I'm budgeting what we anticipate on being actual for FY 23. There's a couple of exceptions to that because we have some agreements in place that will allow us some increased revenue. So we know that's coming. The property taxes, we didn't do a full rollback last year. I had budgeted a horrible rollback and we actually did. So we're probably gonna pick up about a billion and a half in additional property tax revenue just because we didn't do the full rollback last year. And the purpose of that was to cover the cost of those QRV drivers. So we had a plan in place and we enacted that plan. We're continuing to see property tax value increases because property tax probably back in the head of January 1st. So last year, our stock sales were strong, values were continuing to increase. So we feel like just on the value increase, we'll get about a 5% increase on property taxes. And that's again projecting a slight, you know, small rollback, kind of similar to what we've done in the past.
And just, if I can interrupt for a second, as we're talking about property taxes, obviously, new bills, commercials and different things that wouldn't fall under the flooding home stamp. A lot of people, regardless of their values, are going up and depending on what we do with that village, many people could possibly continue to see a flat line and not an actual increase on their bill. And so, and if sometimes people hear increases, or a number, and everyone thinks their taxes is going up, that's certainly not the case in every scenario. We have a lot of people that take advantage of the flooding home stamp.
That's right, it picks the flooding home stamp under the way we're proposing to do this. They, on their accounting portion of their package, they're not seeing an increase. So yeah, that is the case now. If you built a new building on your property, or you built a pool, or you did something else, you will get an increase on the value of that asset. Or if you built a new home or if you paid, if the home sold for $100,000 10 years ago and you just bought it and paid $300,000 for it, and you're gonna pay property tax on $300,000. We finish, you just bought it for that, so obviously that must be fact. But yeah, so we will see that, we'll see increases on things like that. And I've been working with the tax assessor real closely, monitoring that. And we, I haven't spoken to him in the last week, but about two weeks ago, I followed up and confirmed that we're still looking in the same direction right now.
Alicia, a couple of quick questions. On the property tax stuff, I talked with you or two, I understand what you're saying. Timing has been unfortunate, and I think they, while the property tax values would have gone up, they might not continue to go up at least at the rate because of increased interest rates and declining on sales and so on. So the public perception, when they get their new valuation, is it gonna be, the market is flat or down, but my taxes are going up? So, I mean, that's just a, it's an unfortunate perception problem. And I know we'll talk a lot more about the revenue side and possible rollbacks and all that. Do we have anything, I just like to get the big picture before the details. And I see my current 30-year taxes and so on on this sheet. Do we have anything that summarizes like total budget and then total revenue? And maybe by line item, like personal services and other categories, like what the total looks like as a snapshot?
No, but I could probably develop that. It'd probably take me a day to do all that yet. I mean, all this is in a spreadsheet, so it'd just be a matter of cutting and pasting and moving it forward. But I think I could, I could do it.
Is it not what we do, that we tend to advertise it? Isn't that pretty much what we're asking?
No, it's still by, it's still by department, it's not by, so you, it leaves all your wages in each department. And I think what you're asking for is you want to see a lump sum number of wages, you want to see a lump sum number of gas and oil, a lump sum of doing repair maintenance, equipment repair maintenance.
Yeah, I mean, not that-
Not by department, but by expense, more or less by expense line as a total.
Yeah, yeah, first, just an overall total revenue from last year to this year increased. Total expenses from last year to this year increased. And then a breakdown of those expenses by major line items, personal services, supplies, equipment, I mean, whatever those uniformed accounts lay out. I mean, maybe 10 lines, not 40.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I can do that. Kind of moving back one step, I did, I did forget on the health insurance, we're looking at about a 5% increase. And I did do a total on that line, that's gonna be about $400,000 of increase in health insurance for the employees.
Alicia, I got a question. Okay, the proposal, planning is only a definite, our community development is definitely in the building permits are down 50%. So we're looking at this, we're not doing any kind of, this is based on what we are looking at right now. We're not trying to project anything in the future.
No, this is, this is based on what happened at January 1st of 2023. So it's what's already happened. We're just still, they're still adding sales and all of those things into the computer at the tax assessor. But based on the number of entries that they already made into the computer, you can run some numbers to give me some idea of what, what the trajectory of the taxes can be. And so that's what we're basing the property tax number on. No, we're not trying to-
No, we're doing it all.
No, I'm flating because I don't want to be in the situation that, I believe Clint, you and I, Tommy, were in that situation where all of a sudden come March, the chairman has to cut everything. I don't want staff, employees, or us to be in that kind of predicament. It's not a fun predicament to be in. So having learned from previous chairman, we have been very realistic in this budget. We've not inflated it because I don't ever want to have to deal with it. Maybe it might, it might still happen, but we're being very realistic in what the current numbers are. We're not forecasting this, you know, incredible, you know, world. We are keeping it very realistic to what January, February has to look like. So that we don't, I don't want to be in that situation. I don't want to have to come to y'all with a situation that I don't want to make it where employees have to also be cut. I think that's just not a realistic place to live in. Not so you can't, you might have to do it, but we're not planning this budget to set ourselves up. We're not holding our breath like, come on, that is not, no, we're doing very realistic. So there were things that when you go through this a little bit further, you'll see we turned some of the departments down on some stuff. We just said, no, that's not necessary. These other items, the finance director and I have found to be important. That said, you may change your mind and say, well, this thing was requested, we want to make that work. But we were trying to go on realistic numbers. And there's even things that we had a discussion on the log, can't do that, can't do that, can't do that, so.
One more question just sitting here, sorry, I know you can move ahead. We absolutely have a timetable for when to anticipate the move from College Street out to West Door Tech and all that stuff. My question is, do, have we budgeted? Is there something in these numbers that would include expenses for that total move and setup and so on out there? And I know we touched on the IT part, but-
Yeah, not, not the total move. We have increased some utility lines and some other things that we know will cost us more money out there. But we have not, first of all, we're not really sure what it's gonna cost us to move. So it's kind of hard to project that. I think that we can, I mean, some of the build-out, we can, we can spend some lost money out of there if we needed to. Or we could put some, some money if we have some money left at the end of the year, which I'm projecting that we will, we could set aside a certain amount of money that we wanted to use for our moving expenses. That's kind of where I was looking at going with that. If y'all would rather put it in this budget, we can. But I was hoping to set aside maybe some of that year-end money to do the build-out. There again, I'm not sure, I don't even know where departments are going, so I don't have any idea how much we're talking about spending. But we could set aside some money and then if it costs more, then we can, I mean, SPOST is coming in better than expected. So there's a little extra money in SPOST. So I think we've got some money to pay for that yet without having to put it in the general fund, but at least that specifically where y'all would like to put it.
Yeah, and I think the type of move and everything you just explained is where that money needs to be pulled from. The general budget of daily operations and everything, yes, we need to adjust. If we think the power bill is going up or the water bill, but if that passed out, I don't think the move itself, I mean, I know you're not saying it has to come out of this, you're just asking, have we budgeted? But I agree, that needs to be coming from SPOST or coming from somewhere else. Even if we try to departmentalize it, it doesn't need to go in the operational portion of what we're going over now, in my opinion.
That was the whole process I had too, but I'm, I'm open to any suggestions.
Not having to budget it per se. Has there been any rough calculation of how much that might be, or, you know, $300,000 or $3 million or?
No, I don't think we're to the point of getting that calculation.
We haven't signed the contract yet with the construction company, Stacey's still working with them. But Josh has been out and visited the departments over at the College Admins Building by now. He's working with them, he has toured, I won't change the name of the old West Door Tech, but the address is 997 Indian Road. I think that's a much better way to describe it, he's named the old West Door Tech, you know, it's very confusing. But, so they've already, they've already been out there. Josh and I are probably meeting one day next week to really have a sit-down of where we think each person should go. He's got, in a timeline of who can move when. So all that is happening, we just don't have the numbers just yet. Because we've got to develop that for, and then that will be brought back to y'all also as a vote.
Okay, so as we, as we move down through these numbers, we're seeing apparently an art increase in mode vehicle, our TBA T. That's gonna be, I projected that pretty much in line with where we should end up for 2023. The next big line item change is sales tax. There again, we're, we're running on lines of $16 million issued in sales tax. Yeah, you're seeing a big increase there, but I think it's justified through what we're currently seeing.
I just wonder, is that because of price of goods and services has gone up? Or are we bringing more people in here to stay in money?
I think it's a combination of both, but I would say that, I would say that the increase in goods is definitely impacting that number. I mean, there's, I would see how good, when you go to Home Depot and you pay twice as much for a study than you did five years ago, the sales tax is gonna be twice as much.
Five dollars for another thing.
Yeah.
The other thing that we're seeing is not only that component, but the component of online sales. I know this was obviously in place last year, but it's only been in the last few years that state legislature passed, if you're online and you're wearing something and it's coming from Ohio, you should, you didn't pay the tax. And I don't know if they've got the best auditing system in place to make sure we're getting 100% of that. But the reality is, we're getting something that usually we didn't. So as you're seeing increases in spending in local brick and mortar stores, you're seeing that same increase, especially online. Everyone knows that people are just going crazy buying stuff online. So now we've got a revenue system that five or six years ago was not in place. And as that market continues to grow, we're continuing to see that revenue increase on that side. So to me, you've got two different components going that are, you know, responsible for the vast increase that we're seeing in the sales tax.
Yeah, and I think you're right on it as far as online sales, that has had a definite impact, no question.
So Alicia, the first line is the current FY taxes. What specifically is that? Is that just property taxes?
That is just property tax.
Okay.
So once, once we go down to energy excise tax, and I'll, I'll refer back to this in a little bit when we start going on the expense side, but I want to bring this out. This is the tax that is charged to manufacturing companies on their energy, so their electric and gas. And we have seen an incredible amount of growth in that area. And I don't know if we're making back trade more or we've got more plants, or I don't have a big feel for why that helps up, but it is, it is up. It continues to grow more and more. So I'm putting an increase in there. Now, a part of that is shared with the cities. So we actually paid of the $400,000 increments about- increments about forty, so nearly fifty percent of that's paid back out in the municipality. So when we get to the expense side, you'll see an increase in those expenses too. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to, to your attention. The local insurance premium tax, um, is right in line with what we collected this year. Um, and, and that's the, one of the first pages, that's the biggest increases. Now, at the bottom of the page, um.
Felician, can you tell me what that insurance premium tax is? Kind of what that, what that is?
It's my understanding that every time a policy is written or renewed, that there is an insurance premium tax charged on that. Um, I, I can give you more information, uh, from the department already, uh, but it's a, it's a statewide tax. And, uh, we, we get that payment from the state of Georgia. And, uh, in addition to us getting that, the municipality can get a payment from the state on that too. But I'm not a hundred percent sure if it's property tax, life insurance, uh, I mean, prop, property insurance.
You've got fire insurance premium?
Yeah, fire insurance.
So it's multifaceted?
So it's a combination of all the different insurance that it costs?
I, I think it is. Uh, but I can give you, I can give you more information on that.
So this is not something we collect, this is something that comes from the state?
That's right. The state collects it and then they give it. Of course, they charge their administration fee on the, on the, on the.
And it's a leisure state of the municipalities. I mean, funding will break it again in the municipalities.
That's right. Uh, one thing that I recommended that would change this year, uh, we're starting to get a lot of grants, which is a very good thing for us. I mean, we're getting grants from the state, we get grants from the federal government. And a lot of it has to do with the court system, uh, and mental health advocates. But when we only had a few grants, um, I think it was fine for us to account for that through the general fund. But we've gotten to the point that we've got enough grants now. I feel like we should have a separate grant fund to account for, um, our grants. And so I proposed it to the chairman and she was in agreement. Uh, and I talked with the grant recipients, um, on how to do this. And they were all in favor of doing this and it kind of gives the expenses related to these grants out of their operating budgets. So after we're completed with the general fund, I will reuse the grant fund, uh, budget review. But you're going to see that the grant revenue is coming out of the general fund now. It will be accounted for in the grant fund. So.
I like that idea a lot. You know, when we talk for each monthly meeting and I'm looking at the differentiations and seventy percent of the time we're talking about, well, that's a grant coming in on, you know, on the expense side and the revenue side. But it makes it harder to track the true operations on my side of the dice anyways, because I'm giving a bigger view picture instead of all the details. So I like the idea of that separated line item.
And we, we do anticipate getting a, a couple of more grants this year. Um, one, Tru County had managed the mental health court grant and, um, we're bringing that into Carroll County now so that we manage our own health court ourselves instead of taking what Tru County would send to us. So the judge has been very proactive in pursuing that grant fund. And, uh, so that will also be a, a part of that, that grant fund.
Okay. You say you're put, we're going to roll it into the regular budget, grant?
We're rolling it out of the regular.
Okay.
Correct. Rolling it out.
Because if somebody gets a, a hundred thousand dollar, uh, grant and then all of a sudden you're wanting to know why their expenses are, or even on the revenue side, if you're looking at expenses and said, my goodness, why did they spend, you know, seventy five thousand dollars more this time than they did last year? And you go back and realize that they're having to expend it right and it's being charged to that line item. And so to me, it cleans up being able to track the true operation, taking those big lumps on the house.
Well, I understand why. I just, I think I'm, and this is money that's, that we've already, these are grants that we know we're getting.
Correct.
Okay. So I mean, they're guaranteed that all, grant money drives up. I mean, they can go away.
It does. Typically, you have, uh, not all grants are a three-year commitment, but a lot of grants are a three-year commitment. So, um, you know, in those three years, you don't usually see it drive up. Money's being set aside by the other governing authority. Um, we may make a commitment to pay that money out. Now, at the end of that three years, you may be very well right. That money may not come back. The thing that having this grant fund does is it allows us to know what funds are committed for that grant.
Right.
Exactly what's committed for that grant. And so if that grant drives up, we know what we got to get rid of from the expenses.
Is that what the, the, two years ago, we did something with the grant and knowing that when it was gone, we're going to have to roll those numbers in, um, through the general fund.
Right.
Couple, couple questions. The art of grams and all that, the debates have given, we can universally do that to the county, but probably will not be repeated since COVID is in its demise, I guess. So have we accounted for that decrease in just speaking of grants? I mean, we won't be getting those types of revenues.
Yeah, we, we have, we have set those aside, that those funds are decided a whole separate. It's not even part of this, I mean, the grant fund. It's totally separate and totally separate coming in. There's no, that money is sitting there waiting to be expended and y'all have made commitments on a part with the North Carroll Water Project and, and a couple of other things. Um, but you're right, we, I believe y'all, I don't anticipate seeing a, a, any additional revenue flow from that. But that's kind of separate, not, not involved in any of this.
I think the, the biggest things with the grants is, is the two different categories, as I see it, the grant is coming in where we're buying equipment or installation, or we're trying to do an immediate one-time capital improvement, so to speak. And then you've got the other where you've got staff involved. So, you know, at the end of the three years, have we caught something up in a department and we're going to be fine to do without them? Or when that drives up in the three years, are we going to have to put them on the payroll? So two, in my eyes, you've got two different things going on. Some of them are not near as risky on the liability side as far as the future expenses. Uh, and then the others that involve staff is something you really got to monitor and realize if we're taking all this in, are we going, are we going to be willing to, if the need's there, to put them on the payroll? So.
Right.
And the, the new reporting that you're talking about, is it going to include what's there already or just the new grant?
What's, what's there already? So the, like we had Sancho Grant, it is for Carroll County Mental Health Advocate. It's been year two. So it's moved into that grant fund for year three. Uh, so yeah, with its existing grants and new grants. Uh, the only two grants that have not moved into that fund is a geneva operating grant, and those expenses come through our emergency management department. Um, in fact, those just help offset some of the cost of some of the things that they're doing. So I left that in there. And then the forest land protection act grant, I left it in here because, um, the forestry payment that we made comes out of the general fund. So I, I left those in there because the general fund, um, has the expenses that are associated with it. But then you'll see the other, um, you know, federal grants indirect, state grants operating, other grants hold that move to that grant fund. Um.
One quick question. Just kind of go back to property taxes. I, so I think you mentioned that there might be about a five percent increase in property taxes, but the, the change is about eight percent. So I.
Well, well, part of that relates back to last year when we budgeted lower. Um, and then we did roll, fully roll the miller rate back for those, uh, when we decided to do the QRV drivers and we did a minimal rollback. I had actually budgeted a bigger rollback than we needed, um, because we wanted to keep that revenue in the budget to be able to afford the QRV drivers. We never went back and adjusted the budget for that, even though we approved the heads. Um, and we may have to do a budget of them at the end of the year. I don't think we will because we've been, we're still towards half to degrees. So I think that we're, we're going to be able to follow the budget without having to do that. But we, we do, I think next few months, when you see the March, uh, financial statement, you will see that property taxes have exceeded our budgeted property taxes at, 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 at the end of March. So whatever we collect for April, May and June will be on top of that. So when we get to the end of the year, we'll have more, about a million and a million and a half more collected than we actually waited to collect between three.
Okay.
So about, so about a million and, a million and a half of that is associated with last year's lower roll back. So that's how I got to that number. Um, the, the next big line item is current health by commissions. Um, I, I budgeted to what we're, we're anticipating we'll collect it for twenty-three. Um, CI inmate housing, uh, pretty significantly. We got a full house over in CI. Uh, during COVID, we were, we were running short and, uh, we get cut back on that inmate housing amount, but, uh, we've been to capacity probably for twelve consecutive months now. So that's the amount that the state reimburses us for, um, the inmates we keep at CI. Um.
All right. I'm, I'm, where, I'm up there with.
Okay. Third, three, four, two, three, three, eleven is the number on the left. Yeah, it was on the backside of the first page.
Well, no, I didn't know that. There, there, there are pages.
Okay. Okay, all right. My, my, I say the page wrong. I'm praying my, sorry. But that's okay. Uh, jail inmate from the cities, uh, we're getting more revenue from the cities for helping, uh, people that they arrested. Um, recycling income, we, we've seen that go down, the price again, the, um, recycling, um, not a good one. So we're, we're letting it decrease down. Uh, parks, where, uh, there, there is some growth over what we're projecting this year. And that's because, uh, we're going to propose a big change at, at the parks. Uh, our overnight, uh, camping fees are significantly lower than other, um, state parks and other RV parks in the area. So we're trying to position ourselves more in line with what other parks are charging for overnight camping. Uh, and we are going up slightly on the billions. Um, so we, we, and then we'll be, I think there's twelve new sites coming on at Tanner when they finish the RV camping at the Lower Lake. So there'll be, uh, twelve additional camp sites there. Um, so that's, all of that's impacting the revenue at, at Tanner. Now, the parks are running above, uh, projection. Uh, so if you look at the twenty-three budget and the twenty-three actual, we're, I feel that we're going to come in above what we budgeted last year. Uh, but then we've also got an increase in, in the big schedule, which I will approve to approve that. Um, I don't have that big schedule put together yet, but before we get, that will be part of approving the budget and, and we can get that out.
I'd say those new campsites are going to make a eighty percent of that number. I mean, I, I don't know, but I'm just saying that's going to bring in a good bit of additional revenue. So I don't think the fees are, they're probably very nominal changes.
Now, that's, I would, that, I know people that live in Carroll County and they go to, they camp at our parks because they don't have to spend a lot of money and, and they enjoy going there. I don't want to raise the fees to the point where we start running people off.
Well, we're, we're still probably the cheapest game in town. So.
Yeah, we're the cheapest game in town. So let's don't get too carried away.
No, no, I don't think we're, I don't think we're getting, getting as many, I don't know what the timeframe, you know, since the, the things have been adjusted, but it's been.
In what years?
Seven. I mean, I don't think that's been since I've been here. I've been here five years. Uh, but I believe it's been closer to ten years since we've adjusted the fees. So, uh, and we get on, we'll go through rec next and then we'll pick back up on the parks, which you can see the differences there. Uh, we're, we're seeing increases across the board at the rec park. Uh, participation levels are, uh, growing year after year in all of the sports, uh, particularly gymnastics, but, uh, all, all of the sports are seeing an increase in participation. So, um, we're, we, we're basing those on current participation rates. So, um, I, I think we should be aligned there. Uh, back down to, to McIntosh and Little Tyler, please. And now both of those are going to be based on, uh, the increase in, in the things. So that's, that's pretty much leading on those two parts.
Like, do we have any differentiation between in-county and out-county residential sort of fees?
No.
All right. I'm not, I'm not.
When you said that, I, I think that.
That went away too.
That, that went away probably ten years ago. I think they're, they're making a little while. Something that happened before I got, well, even things that happened when I, when since I've been here, I'll extract time and I can tell you exactly that. But I'm sure all of that would have been changed by the time I was here. Uh, the sheriff salary reimbursement is, is going up pretty significantly. They renegotiated rates with the school systems for the resource officers. I think that's where that money, uh, come, comes from. So that's definitely the sheriff office that somebody has caused with the resource officers at schools.
Felician, are we going, I mean, how big, how, how deep in the weeds are we? Is this an overview that we're doing right now?
Well, I can answer a question. I'm excited to try.
Well, the Lower's Bridge Park, I don't know if that, but it shows a thousand dollars. I, we're like, I know there's, there's been a movie set down there. Do we get, where's that money show up?
Well, it didn't show up in the budget because we don't have another, that showed up in actual revenue.
Okay.
But we don't have a projection of another would be coming in there right now. So I'm not on budget.
No, I, I was just curious. I was wondering where that money, where do we see that, where's that money show up?
It would have showed up in that line item on the actual, uh, revenue. And I believe that was in last year.
Okay.
Uh, we, we may have actually got more payment in twenty-twenty-three, but most of that ended in the twenty-twenty-two actual numbers. But that would be the line I'm going to say yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, state court fines, we still, we continue to see growth there. Uh, the number of cases continues to grow. Um, so we've increased the revenue to pretty much in line with where we think it's going to be for twenty-three. Uh, civil costs, same thing. Uh, fines and fees in magistrate went up this past year with Judge Hubbard in there. Uh, I hope that we continue to see the same thing now with Judge Smith. Uh, recording fees at state court are down a little bit, so I, I adjusted out and down. Uh, fines for jail, even though it's up, uh, so I went to, we're running line in the past. Uh, we get down to our interest, uh, projected increases, pretty significant increases across the board there. Uh, and we're, we're seeing that, uh, talking with the banks. They, they feel like interest is going to, it, it may correct down some, but I think we're still. some, but I think we're still going to be able to get, you know, three to four percent on the money. And it's good to have that interest revenue to not have to buy revenue in other places. So it's good to have that.
Alicia, before you go into first, let us back it up a little bit. Why have we got two negative, negative five hundred on credit card fees?
Because that's, it's actually an expense. So when, when you charge the credit card for a thousand dollars, we get nine hundred, ninety dollars or whatever, you know, the fee, so we have to go with the fee as a contra into that.
Right. But, but what I'm saying is, I'm trying to, where's the five hundred number? In other words, what's that inclusive of?
That's the fee that the credit card company charges us.
Just?
To process the credit card for revenue.
Okay.
Now, some of, most of our credit cards have got access, so we don't have to pick up.
Correct, that's what I was getting at.
The square that we use at the contention stand in the rec department, they charge, they give it to us gross and they charge us the fee back.
So, but what I'm getting at on the revenue side is you're just doing basically like a premium, right? In other words, what it costs for us to operate that. We're not showing the operational increase past the product. In other words, if we're charging two dollars for a drink to use a credit card and we charge them two twenty-five or whatever, we're not showing that on the revenue side of the credit card, we're letting that stay with the department.
That's right.
This is just a premium only, if you will?
That's right.
Okay, I just want to follow on with these.
Okay. Then pass that on the rents, we didn't see any changes there. Now, the total revenue you're seeing growth of a little over sixty million dollars. So that's where you got your one line item, that shows your total revenue last year compared to this year, and they changed that.
So that's about a nine percent increase overall.
That's correct.
And is that how much on the expense side we expect to budget?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
It's about.
Yeah.
Right, so that concludes the summary of the revenue. The big pack that's in the Carroll County Commission Office, summary of budget appropriations for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, and you will see the Department thirteen oh one Commission Office first. So if the wage increase is only related to the two dollar an hour or the dollar and a quarter, I'm not going to talk about it in every department. That's in across the board rates, it's going to affect every department in here. The only wage changes that I'll talk about are the positions that we went over, that I summarized at the, at the first meeting. I'll go back over those as we go through this budget.
Can, could we get, as far as personal services increases cost? So this is about a five percent increase in the first Department Commission Office. Is that what we anticipate, so two dollars an hour for full-time, dollar fifty for part-time, four point one seven five, I guess I could do a half now, but I see the total of the month this one over. But what, what percent increase is that in total, personal services cost?
Um.
That's what I'm getting at, I'd like to have that overall sheet.
Okay, well, are we shooting with positions or without new positions? Not with, the new positions taken out of that, so you just know what the increase in the salaries are from another total increase in salaries.
Uh, I guess it would be good to see total increase, not the new positions, total increase because of what we're increasing in salaries and our number.
I'll have to do some calculations to get.
Is it roughly five percent?
Um, well, hang on a minute, let me just.
Because, I mean, in the, in the regular salaries, it increases about five percent. The forty thousand is about five percent.
I'm thinking it's not a good time to take a quick break. That might give Alicia a moment to do some quick add and quick stuff. So I'll give her a second to that. How about like ten, ten, that'll give her a chance to take a quick break. So we'll break at this moment. Pass that to order from the break, and we were on the Department thirteen oh one.
Correct. So Commissioner Reynolds had asked about the percentage increase in the wages without the extra positions, and I went back and took, took out the positions that we had added in, and the increase would be about nine point three percent. So that's, that's about where we're in, in the, without any additional positions in In the Commission Office, the biggest thing that we're asking for is some clerk software to help with keeping up with some of the recording, open record request recording, and also keeping up with the minutes on the meetings and those kind of things. We're duplicating work right now, doing it multiple times, and the software would help to eliminate that. Now, the, the software will have to be purchased from another fund, but this is the maintenance, the annual maintenance on that, on that software. And there are some, some books that have been posted in shares, but we, I think that is only, we're looking as far as our actual, if we're concerned.
I know of some other municipalities that have bought similar softwares and they've said it is amazing how it streams line, streamlines things and how quicker you can, of course, I think that's a good investment.
Yeah, the, the agenda changes, they don't take quite some time to go through all of that, and the software would really help and.
You have to sit right here, but I believe you may, you could probably go on for an hour to convince you.
Well.
Re-records, I mean, everything, the paperwork is, the board appointments, we were just talking about that, Steve, and we're pulling up the Excel sheet, and it is very archaic, so.
And we are operating with currently one less person than we have in the past, so they're doing more, so the, the software would definitely help. And maybe, you know, if we go down the road, we, we can keep it at two people in the chair and columns. As we move into elections, we will, we will have potentially more elections this year with some potential runoffs, so we budgeted some increase in the election expense. That, that kind of fluctuates year to year based on what elections we're into, but that's really the biggest change in the elections department.
We never know when there's going to be a call or special election, and they have no control over that.
That, that's great, too. Then fifteen oh one, we've got a couple of things there that I'm going to talk about in particular. One is the, in the miscellaneous expense, we're having to pay management fees to bankers in K for our investment, our treasury bill investments. Now, that increase in the expense is offset by that interest income that we saw over in the revenue, revenue line. So we're, we are having to pay them a fee for their management services, but we're getting, instead of getting three point seven five for a landmark, we're getting almost five percent on the, on the treasury bill, so it more than offset the expense. Then on the utilities line, we have added eighty-eight thousand dollars. That is for the nine ninety-seven minute road building. Obviously, we're going to be out there working and, and doing a lot of things that we moved in, so we'll have to have utility costs at that point. And then, in my mind, it's going to be a transitional move where you're going to move a department and potentially have other departments left at the old College Street Building for a few months, as you transition all of the departments into the new space. So we felt like there would be an increase with having to pay water, power, and gas out there. And the last line right there, the payment to others, that's what I was talking about on the excise tax. So that's going to be the increase that we will pay to the municipalities for that increase in the excise tax, which is, the, the excise tax was on the revenue machine about halfway down, we were projecting a hundred thousand dollar increase, and then we're projecting a hundred and fifty-three thousand increase to the payments that are relative to the municipality. So that's what that increase is for.
So that would be less to be.
That, that's correct.
Just a tiny question, so those aren't fees, are those in line with what we would expect to pay if we invested with company else? I mean.
They are. We, we pay, you know, we pay fees to regions for the treasury bill there, and we're, we're right in line with what we paid to regions. And I, I get, you know, solicitations from East West Bank and some other big banks, and those are pretty much in line with where those companies are saying that they charge us. Yeah. All right, fifteen oh one, page three, we see our, our law line that we pay, our terms, and then we see our information technology. And so this is where we're putting that technician, the additional technician in for the courthouse, audio, video, that's up there on the top line. And then Jacob has proposed buying a security software, and this company will monitor, it's a software that monitors the flow of information over the internet into our system, and it recognizes issues. That company has twenty-four seven coverage, so if the software detects a problem, they got a technician sitting there watching it, and if it detects that problem, they shut them, they're able to keep a cyber attack from happening. It's a pretty expensive software package, but it gives you twenty-four seven coverage on your cybersecurity, and he felt like we're to the point, and the hackers are getting sophisticated enough that we need to increase our level of coverage on that side.
Does that, do you know if that includes any type of liability protection for us besides what it's designed to do? In other words, in the private sector like life law, you're buying a service that it alerts you about your credit, and in addition to that, they're going as far as to say, but if it's actually stolen, we're going to, you know, cover you up to so many millions of dollars. Is there any type of program in this?
I don't have, that would be a question that you would need to ask.
Because it would, it would definitely add value to how expensive that is, so.
I wonder, Alicia, like, and I forget oil, Russian, Senator didn't say, but is there some entity like Russian or ACCG or something that, that says, in other words, evaluates an entity's level of cybersecurity and says, here's what you need to increase, or here's how you need to improve your cybersecurity? Is there some industry that, that says, here's the standard, here's where you fall short kind of thing? Because I mean, we have one hundred fifty-nine counties and governments all over the place, and I'm just wondering, just, just really a, a basic question of, you know, we can say many of this, and somebody can say many of that, but as universal, as the, as the term of cybersecurity, and as governments are, is there somebody that evaluates what we have and would say, this is precisely what you need?
Well, there are, there are companies that totally specialize in that, and you would have to take for them to.
Evaluate.
To do the study. But we have already in Marshall McLennan's cyber specialists, and they have reviewed our policies and procedures and what we have in place, and they have made recommendations. We also work with a company called, well, it's called, I think it's called Cohaus now. They handle our, they handle all our backups, and they do some security testing for us to make sure that our call balls are working correctly and those kind of things. So this would, this would just be an additional level to that. I, I don't know, I guess Jacob would have to answer more specifically about why I can determine that this particular product would be best for what we do. The, the thing I like about it is that it monitors your system twenty-four seven and they have techs available all the time to jump in there and stop something. Where it starts at only works Monday through Friday closely. I mean, he gets alerts on his phone and that kind of thing right now that he, that he can deal with, and he can get online and try to do with. This is just one more layer of security that helps prevent that, that cyber attack.
Well, there was a lot of news this morning, one of our adversaries has, and it's a group that already exists, but they, they're saying they're specifically going after infrastructure, electronic infrastructure inside the United States. And when they say infrastructure, I'm talking about bridges and roads.
Right.
The banking institutes, shipping, governmental computers, that sort of thing. So, so we're, we're dead in the site for somebody somewhere.
And I think, I have no doubt Jacob is going to talk this into him, but relating it to Marshall McLennan, I would probably want to too, making recommendations. I'm not saying they're going to say, no, you don't need this, but if it's the best expenditure of that money, I want to make sure we're getting some kind of credit, if you will, that we're aligning with what they're recommending. And here again, I'm not saying they're going to give us a discount, but we're always thinking about how this insurance keeps going up and up and up. Are we in line to hold them accountable too, where we're expending funds of the exact same thing that they're recommending?
Right, and that, that was also the thought process of this, is that we, you know, let them know that this is what we've done, and, and our premium tab on a year after year after year, because there's more and more attacks, cyber attacks. So our goal is to keep from getting a premium increase. I don't think we're going to get a credit, but if we can just keep it from going up, that was part of the strategy here. I, I have not discussed that, seeing, we'll, we'll move on and get into something else, but related to insurance, I'll, I'll talk about that a little bit, and we got two other things we didn't, that we've been looking at as far as insurance, and I haven't really gotten into this part of it with the NDA. But I would probably address that if we've been involved.
I guess I'd just like some assurance that all of our, cybersecurity is not ever an issue, and we can golf over it, I mean, until it happens, and that's, that's disaster. I'd just like to know, I get someone's accurate opinion about how safe we are, and maybe not a full blown audit of our system, but it's. a full blown audit of our system, but it's, I feel like I'm operating in the dark, we don't have any assurance, you know, we're personally a master goose, but overall, I just don't know.
Okay. Okay, the next department is the tax commissioner. We'll make a few adjustments later, but more or less, the biggest part of the increase there is gonna be related to the increase in wages. Tax assessors, same thing. We kept the contractors that we hired, please help with the assessments, are doing what Hubert needs them to do, and he is still kind of hard time hiring assessors, so for the year moving forward, he needs to continue that contractual relationship. He's still looking for assessors, and he's still interviewing and trying to find people to fill those positions, and if he does, then we will bring that back in house. But for the time being, he's going to continue that contractual relationship. And we also have the contractual relationship with GMAS, who's been in the commercial office.
Do you know how many people he showed as far as assessors?
I believe there were five that we did not cover.
So, and assessors, is this based on our current contract next year?
Yes, I mean, it's based on, like, the increase of eleven thousand dollars as a contractual obligation with GMAS. So, their contract calls for an eleven thousand dollar increase. The property tax, the person or the residential property that he's contracting with should stay the same.
And I remember him presenting that, saying that the terms were, for one reason, why we went with that particular firm is that they weren't gonna increase the cost.
And we having an idea, if we staff that department fully, what that would cost us versus what the contract might be?
It's about the same, because what we did, when we took the salaries and the associated benefits out, that's what we put into that contractual line to hire them to come in and get those parts for us. So, it was in line. Risk management, so this gets into the insurance. We were just talking about the cybersecurity, or cyber insurance, but overall, we're, I anticipate that we're looking at a pretty large increase in our liability and our auto insurance. We did reassess our values on all of the buildings this year, and we were underinsured on all of our buildings. We have adjusted those values up, and now we have proper property values on all of our buildings. That related to a seventy-six thousand dollar increase in premium, just the increase in the property.
And, you know, I know things have gone up, but I spent thirty minutes talking about this on multiple other things, and I was referred to from the insurance company about how we got the umbrella policy. So, I'm not saying this isn't right, but I asked a question when I looked at a lot of the structures of pulling the line out, and saying, gosh, can we rebuild a fire station for this amount? And the presentation was essentially not that the numbers didn't even be as accurate as possible, but that we had the umbrella policy. So, that may be something I need to speak with the professionals about, the insurance, but I'm a little amiss, I guess, about that, that all of a sudden, all of our values were wrong when a year or so ago, I asked those specific questions, and there wasn't, you know, alarm. And that may be taken into account inflation, I'm not saying they've done anything wrong, I'm just simply saying, it's a little bit of a contrast of what was presented to the board before, that the values, you know, looked okay overall, and that the reassurance was that we had umbrella policy.
Well, the inflation has definitely had an impact, and that was part of why we took a look at the valuation and everything, because we didn't know that the cost of rebuilding something is significant or more. I don't recall the discussion on the umbrella and how that related, so I think it would be best to have that discussion with the agency on that. We are in the middle of working very diligently on trying to keep Liberty Mutual as our insurance company. We're concerned, our loss run is cannot be good. We've paid in about nine hundred thousand dollars of premium, and last year we had one point three million dollars in losses and reserves. And that's been the case, if it was a weaker situation, they wouldn't, probably wouldn't be looking as strongly at it as they are. But this is a trend that's been consistent over a three-year period, and it hasn't been one thing, it's been a combination of property, auto, and liability that have contributed to large loss from it. So, they've been losing money on us, and so we gotta convince them to continue to insure us, and hopefully put some additional things in place to try and help mitigate some of these losses going forward. So, we're, I've been working almost as hard on that as I have on this budget, and that's a big deal. These numbers could change, so I put in numbers into the budget that I hope we can make work, but at this point, I have no idea when we're gonna end up on this auto liability insurance. We're looking at, we're talking to some different companies, trying to get some options, and even putting some varied strategies together to make it, make it more appetizing to them to take us on as a risk. So, we may be coming back in a few weeks or a month and saying, what you saw, or maybe not seen, is different than what we've got right now. So, I'm sorry that we can't give you a clear picture on that, but we're early in the process and trying to work through all the things that we gotta work through to get to the other side of it, and it's gonna take a little bit of time. We did have a meeting with Liberty Mutual tomorrow. Avery, myself, Fire Chief, Chief Deputy at the Sheriff's Office, and maybe, I'm not sure who else from the Sheriff's Office, maybe they're probably their safety person. But we're gonna sit down and talk with Liberty Mutual tomorrow to try to encourage them to keep our business.
Well, I gotta go, but I should show, you know, at our Calaway Retreat, Marshall McLennan gave the presentation about Georgia becoming number one in catastrophic lawsuits awarded in the court system, and how we needed to push toward reform and so on. Just FYI, I got that information from Marshall McLennan, and I have talked with some of our state level legislators, and I'm still wanting to put the letter together for us to send to ACCG, coordinate with them, whatever, to somehow present a unified front that we might get toward reform. But Georgia being number one in the nation now, moving up as Marshall McLennan presented for number three, is a primary reason for increases in everybody's rates. And I still think it behooves us to do some coordinated effort with Marshall McLennan and our legislators to see if we can't get the state to act on that and present some, get us off of the number one category on that, because it affects all our constituents, and I guess it's affecting us by a two hundred fifty-five thousand dollar increase. The other thing is, what can we do to decrease that? And the EVOC training course, I mean, is that anything maybe in your discussions tomorrow, is that anything that's gonna be presented, let's say, a, you know, event, accident series there? But if you put this in and spend this money, that's a good sign that you are for reducing the currents and that kind of thing. Will that help us in rates? Is there anything else we can do, like increases in the deductible allowance or something like that, that we wouldn't have, I don't know if our deductible is now, but if we increase it to fold, would that decrease our rates? I mean, that's a huge jump, and it seems like, I can't get a picture of, you know, we're just in a snowstorm or a blizzard, and don't know our way out of it. Now, we're just subject to all elements, and we're not doing anything about helping that at the state level, and nobody else is jumping in to do anything. But we could do something, maybe at our local level, to at least address that by more training and more increase of deductible. I guess if we put a million dollars toward the EVOC training course, would that be offset that by, you know, a hundred thousand a year decrease in our insurance premiums? I mean, I don't know a lot of the picture of it, but...
Well, I can tell, we've already had a discussion with them that we intend on putting that training facility in, and they did agree that that would help. I don't think that's going to have to be an impact on our premiums, because both of the losses that we've already incurred. So, I think where that training course becomes so bad is that we put drivers in positions that they tie themselves down on the road, and they learn how to react to those in a real life scenario. So, I think what the training facility will do is it will carry us down the road. I think that's a great future plan, and I think that's, I think very much, I think once we get it in place, then we will see our incidents hopefully go down in stones in the incidents that were already becoming less impactful, where you have minor things like pendulators and that kind of thing, rather than major accidents. As far as the deductibles are concerned, that's one of the big considerations we're taking into place right now. The chairman, Avery and I have met, and we wanna look at that option, and we presented that to Marsh, and it's something that we may be willing to do. We wanna see what the numbers are before, and obviously, y'all have to know about what that's, what impact that's going to have. But we totally willing to offer that as an option, you know, till we possibly get to a point where it's liability only. I don't know, I don't know if we're willing to take those kind of risks. If we did that, and we had very few accidents, you know, at the end of the day, we could come out a whole lot better, in a whole lot better shape. But if we took that strategy and then we had the kind of accidents that we got down, we could end up with a million dollars in damages that we had to pay out of the pocket. So, some of those strategies are, I think those strategies have been the cap, and the position we're in right now, those strategies have been the cap. And so, we're looking at those. But again, I think it's gonna take twenty-five, thirty days before we know what the companies are willing to do for us. I think there's been very often working with us and working with them, is there anything you wanna add to that?
Just that we are exploring every option and scenario that we can think of, because the key is to show that we're a good risk as an insurance company, and try to get them to continue to take that in almost as, it is just exploring every single option that's out there, and hopefully being able to present some options to the board once we get those from them.
One thing I wanna talk about, and it's on the opposite side of the pendulum swing of increases and trying to deal with the claims we have had, but I do think all of our department heads and staff have bought into the idea of trying to be as safe as they can, especially when the emergency vehicles are running, there's an imminent risk, obviously, with the speeds and everything. But I know in the past couple of months, there's been at least two or three different times that I've seen a fire truck come to an intersection in a red light, and they've nearly completely stopped and looked all the way, and they kept going. And they were young drivers, and I'm not saying that they were not driving properly before, but I know that was one of the things about intersection wrecks and different things. And so, I called the chief and complimented him, and so I think that the areas that we do see, and I've seen them taking, that's just one example, two or three different times, that is obviously seated with the employees, and they know they're gonna be very careful at the intersection. So, I think it's important too, when we see that, that we relay that to our department heads, to let them know that, you know, outside of the training course or other things that they're trying to do in daily operations, that when we see that, that we compliment them, and I've seen that multiple times. So, I appreciate the efforts they're doing. And unfortunately, in this kind of world, we're making that one or two really bad claims right, it blows everything out of the water, doesn't mean you have to have a hundred wrecks. But I do appreciate the staff in the department, it's just what I've visually seen, and I'm driving myself, that they have been very careful, that I have seen, since this has all been such a hot topic in the last few months.
Yeah, I think all the departments are, and really are, to minimize, and the other side of the coin is we just have a lot of risk, there's a lot of vehicles on the road, we own a lot of vehicles, they're out there moving every day, and, you know, a good portion of those are moving in emergency situations. And for whatever reason, people don't yield to emergency vehicles as they should sometimes, and it makes a driver make a split second decision, you know, one way or another, maybe call another driver, but...
The QRV is another example of an investment, in my opinion, of lowering liability. You've got a vehicle, even though it can be expensive with all the apparatuses, it's a lot less expensive than a million dollar fire truck, and the sheer inertia of a modern-sized vehicle possibly colliding with another modern-sized vehicle, you've got a lot less likelihood of damage than you have a massive fire truck hitting someone. And so, with so many of our calls being the main calls, I really appreciate it that the board has supported those QRVs, because another mainly operating in my district, because it's the busiest for emergency calls. But I think that, to your point, long-term, everything's not gonna be in the moment, but long-term, I think we're gonna see that that's gonna assist us to...
I think that's gonna be a good selling point with Liberty Mutual today, that'll be something we'll focus on tomorrow, just talking about the commitment to the QRV. So, I think we do have some policies to talk about, and, you know, we're gonna do everything we can to try to convince them, and if we can find somebody else potentially that might ride it, we'll pursue them that in a sense.
I have a question about a time frame here. Our contract with the insurance company coincides... Our contract with the insurance company coincides with our budget here, right?
That's right.
So we're kind of in front here.
We don't.
Well, usually with insurance, we've actually, over the last two years, backed them up because like in the real world, like with Morgan Oil, for example, our renewal date is April 15th. We usually get our renewal on March 30th. So they really are working earlier and earlier with us, understanding that we have this retreat work session planned in May, I have to advertise, you know, at the beginning of May. And you don't want to advertise one thing and it has to be so totally different when you actually put your budget or you vote on it in June. So they've been really good to understand the process, both on the property casualty and on the health insurance side. Because even then, like with Morgan Oil, January 1st is our renewal for health insurance. And it's usually the middle of November when we get our renewal rates. So for us crunching as far as a government entity preparing for you this budget, it is not their usual way of doing business. They've been very, very accommodating to try and help us as best they can. That said, insurance itself is, not just in this particular area, but we just learned that last Friday, that Humana is pulling out of the state of Georgia. So it doesn't matter what your renewal date is, if you have Humana insurance, by July 1st, you have nothing. So a lot of people are scrambling on the health insurance side. So we're seeing some of these insurance companies pulling out of Georgia. I can gather, we've had discussions out walking and talking while we think somebody is pulling out, but on the other hand, you still have to adjust whether you like it or not. So that's what we're doing now. We've been brainstorming and talking whole hours, what can we do to be desirable? But I don't think it's just us. I think it's everyone across the board that's having to adjust and figure out how to get the insurance for the best insurance price you can get.
And I know we can continue this off and on. Two things that I want to make sure, and I know y'all are fully aware of this, but I don't want to get caught up in this, where we'll just increase the deductible and that's how we're saving money. We need to have two different pots, you know? We're doing all these different things, or this is what we want to implement and we're going to try to save money, or what do you think we can control costs here with? And then on the other side, this by the way, if we went up double or triple our, you know, premium, whatever you want to say, a lot of times things get lost into one topic and it's to the benefit of the insurance company. So I think that whatever we're trying to negotiate at work with them, we need to work with two different categories, I guess is my point, to figure out where those premiums may lie.
Well, and that was kind of next on the list. There's a $30,000 increase in damage levels. And I kind of, there's no definitive way of how I came up with that number. I just added that in as an anticipation of possibly having an increase in deductible. So, you know, all of those lines could change based on what we can do as far as our insurance negotiations get, and the contingency can adjust it down. That's kind of what the line that took the hit, or the biggest part to get for some of these protective increases. And, you know, we've got a little bit more to go there if we had to. I like having a hundred and fifty thousand in the contingency line because you just never know what's going to break or what's going to happen throughout the year. And it's always needed to have that.
Well, I've been struck on the state unit.
That's right. It's always needed to have that, but at the end of the day, we needed to pay deductible or pay premiums or do some other things with, we may have to adjust that one a little bit more. But I agree with you, you know, if we're going to adjust our deductibles, then we do need to set some money aside in anticipation of what we think we might be. If we don't, then it's a plus for us at the end of the year. But if we do that, then we have it.
One last question. Are you seeing any interest from any other companies besides Liberty Mutual or Liberty Stata and Liberty?
Lacy has been killing it on this study. I mean, I don't know how many hours we've spent talking to him. I think the last two weeks, I've probably spent 20 hours on him, talking about different scenarios and what we're doing and everything. They actually gone reached out to a broker who they used to work with quite a bit and had done a lot of work with recently to try to get some interest in our account. And he does feel like he does have one other possibility. But we're so early in the situation right now that we don't, nobody can make that commitment. So we just kind of work hard and I believe that he will come up with a couple of options just based on what he's said so far and how hard I know he's working. I mean, he's working on the daily, Robinson's working on it, their safety guy, and he's probably spent 10 hours in the last week working on some documents and things to help us with the renewal. So they've spent quite a bit of time, you know, pursuing things and trying to put things together to make it look good for us.
Alicia, when I asked the timeframe question, I wasn't anticipating that we're dragging our feet on this. My concern is, what if we get to the end of the contract and we don't have insurance?
That's a possibility. I'm not going to sit here and decide that that's not going to happen again. That's definitely a possibility. I do feel like it's hard as Lacy's working on it and his staff's working on it, it's hard as we're working on it. I feel like we don't have some options. I don't feel like the sky's calling right now. You know, thirty days will make them do it right now.
I can pretty closely follow that in the conversation.
It's moving around up there a lot.
Oh, the way I see it, and I know you're doing a lot of, maybe you're doing a lot of, but it seems like we have a two-pronged. One is, our premium budgetary is going up at anticipated 55% or more. That's a huge increase as we know. So the two prongs are, is it going up because of, number one, our increase in claim, new claims amounts and accidents? Or is it going up because of no live tort reform and it's universally going up and other counties are experiencing the same thing? I imagine it's a combination of both. So what can we do to bring down those two prongs? I guess I go back to, if it's universal and other counties are experiencing the same thing and so on, I, I, there should be a very unified concerted push to addressing this with the state legislature and ACCG and just wanting to get this at the top of the list so that we don't, every year, but I can recall for the last three years at least that I've been sitting here, we have said, well, we're going to make an increase in insurance premium, but, you know, we had a lot of accidents, we're going to do what we can. And Martin McCallum and I'll lay hand and look for a combination that would be best and so on. But the next year comes, oh, we've got a big increase again. And it seems like no matter what, we're just sitting ducks for increased premiums. So I guess I would like to see us have a very conservative choice toward getting the state to act if it's a universal problem and pointing that out so we get off of the list as being, Georgia being number one in the nation for nuclear awards. If it's our claim, and that's the primary driver, then, you know, what can we do for that? And we talked about that, like Commissioner Chan said, you know, I think departments are very aware of that and doing what they can. I don't know how much more, if it is the training course or that sort of thing. But I guess I'm tiring a little bit of every year having a significant increase, no matter what we do. And to the extent that that's a universal statewide thing, then ACCG needs to get off of that and do something about it. And we need to put something together to push them and push our local legislators to do something to address these increases every year because Georgia has moved, Martin McCallum pointed out, from number three, last year, number one, in nuclear exposure and claims. And we'll be sitting here again next year for a 40, 50, 60% increase again, no matter what the discussions are. And it's, it's just, maybe we're not going to cheat the oil in the wind and we can't stop a storm.
I'd like to address some of that, on the nuclear verdict issue, that really does affect the counties like it does the private citizens. Counties where cat on auto claims for $700,000 per occurrence, $500,000 per person involved in the occurrence, and $50,000 for property damage related to that. So it's, we have statutory caps and it's a part of the community waiver. So it's not really the nuclear verdicts that the insurance companies are really worried about with the county. As far as claims, it's not a number of claims that the county's had. We have had, I mean, for the amount of cars that we have on road, I'm sure, I mean, we insure a lot, we have a lot of cars on road. So we have a number of claims, but most of them are very small, relatively speaking. What's really driving this is we have four first responder accidents over the last two years responding to emergency calls that were involved in accidents that resulted in serious damage. And that's really what we're talking about here is those four claims or incidents have been significant that's resulted where we are today. Three years ago, we didn't have, I think it was three years ago, we didn't have any serious claims and it was, I think, when we had $17,000 damage there. So, and our premium, our liability premium from auto hasn't really stayed the same over the last five years. It was 370 for two years and then it went up to 380 for the last three years. But it hasn't really adjusted that much. I think the insurance company has done a good job with the claims that we've had, settling on all the points that actions would take in with the QRVs and training and all these other things to keep it where it is. Now ultimately where that's left us is, we probably was under that premium. And maybe we should have been paying more because of the risk we had as they fared out, we had spent more. So I think it's just adjusting it and getting it priced correctly, really, what it is, towards the types of claims that we have and the number.
And we have a unique difficulty. If we were in the sheriff's car, it's $35,000. If we were in the fire truck, it's a million dollars, potentially. So we're in a unique situation, unlike a normal business that might have a fleet of the same priced vehicles. It's hard for us to know what should that premium or what should that deductible be? Because we don't know from year to year, is it going to be the million dollar vehicle with the red, or is it going to be the $35,000 car that's easily replaced?
I mean, we've been in that situation for decades. And so if it's not a universal problem, as you're pointing out, due to limits and so on, then, I mean, it's either one or the other, or both. So if it's not a universal, then it's our claims. And as you pointed out, it's some very important claims for, I guess, imagine. So, I remember sitting here, at least, I guess, a couple of years ago or so, and it was like, well, we have one claim that's about to come off and we'll see a decrease. Well, I mean, and I'm not blaming Martin McCallum at all, I think they have done, pointed out, you know, great claims we could do and search for a best company and so on. But it seems like in spite of all the effort, our premiums go up. So if it is due to four claims, at the point they come off and we don't repeat the occurrences, then we should see a decrease in the number of, at some point, we can see a difference. But so far, I can't recall ever seeing a difference. So it just, it's a bit baffling to me that every year we sit here and we talk about huge increases in insurance premiums, in spite of what we do, if it's to do with claims, then, yeah, we should see a decrease if we're fully addressing that side. But it's either one, it's either universal or claims or a combination of the two.
Well, and I don't think over the last couple of years, we've seen huge increases. I mean, we've seen somewhere between 50% this year. It's going to be a little bit different, but, I mean, my personal insurance on my car went up 20% this year.
Well, that's the universal side. Mine did too.
In my car, all my vehicles are in the sun, so they're all year old.
Yeah.
And I didn't have an accident this year. And I haven't had an accident in the last ten years.
Well, that's what I said, that's the universal side.
But I still got a 20% increase on my auto, so...
That's right. But I hadn't heard it wasn't that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, there is, yeah, I mean, we're limited to how much time we're going to have here, but, you know, we're just in a, we're in a different situation for this year. We can, I think that this might be a discussion that we can continue to...
I believe they'd love to stand, not to rush everybody, but we could talk about this for another hour and it's still not changing things as of then because we've got further leading to the insurance company. We will be back in touch with you, so, plus, if we could move on 2150.
Okay. That's Superior Court. And we're anticipating getting the next judge in the circuit this year. I don't know if the government, the governor would have signed off on that or not at this point, but if they did, we're going to have another supplement, then we're going to have to pay to the next judge. So that's the increase in salary supplements. We increased the court reporter fees in the jurors because we're trying to do more trials now and get people processed out of our jails quicker. So to do that, we have to have jurors and we have to have court reporters.
And I'm going to just go with, I'm going to propose that we do something for the bailiffs to pay at some point. It's been brought up, I've had a few conversations and it's been brought my attention. I think they're paid like a $75 per day. And I don't think they've had a increase in several years. I do want to have a couple more conversations. And I'm not talking about anything drastic, but I do think if they're a part of our Carroll County family of employees, that they should get something. I mean, they're having to pay more for gas and come back and work to work and different things as well. So I would like to adjust something there. I don't know what I would propose yet, but just going ahead and laying that out on the table. But very, you know, if it was $10 a day or $15 more a day, something to compensate that, you know, they haven't had an increase in quite some years because of the structure of how that's paid, just a flat rate.
Right. Well, let me know what you think when you figure that out and we'll see where we're going to have to next move together.
So they're not full-time, part-time, or are they 1099 or what is it?
No, they're on a per day, they pay $75 a day. I don't think that's when they work partially or a full day, it depends on how they...
My understanding is if it goes to eight o'clock at night or something, they may be paid additional, but by and large, if they're working a full paid hour day or roughly thereof, they're just getting a flat amount. Now, you can also pay if you're only here for a couple hours, you're still getting $75. But the way I look at it is, there's a cost of business and there's a cost of just coming to work, whether you're here an hour, whether you're here eight hours, you still have to get dressed, you still have to do all these things, you have to have insurance on your vehicle, pay gas or whatever. So here again, I just want us to, that was brought my attention, and I just want to see us make some kind of adjustment there.
Okay. And they are paying for their own. So that's, they're not contracted, they're paying for their own. On the Department of 218, Department of Superior Court, the biggest increases that we're sending there are just the salary increases. The district attorney, I didn't know how much they asked for, I think it was about The District Attorney, I didn't know how much they asked for, I think it was about forty thousand.
One hundred thirty-three thousand.
A hundred thirty-three thousand and we spoke to them about seventy-five thousand and they agreed that they could work with that. So we put a seventy-five thousand dollar increase for the District Attorney's office.
And even though this doesn't follow right next, we did the public defender the exact same amount, so. Wish the numbers could be back to that, but no government and county does not have that.
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying. State court, that's where you're seeing that additional part-time court coordinator and if you'll look down and the public defender is seeing twenty-five thousand dollar increase in temporary labor and the public defender is spending, she's seeing a reduction of twenty-five thousand. That's where I was talking about that position while it's contract and now we're moving it to a part-time position that we pay for payroll. And most everything else there is just going to be salary increases.
What did they help the insurance do there? From the employee.
We had employee and family coverage and they're going, they're doing employees out of that.
Okay.
Solicitor, this is Quinler and the additional victim advocate. So that's the new position in the solicitor department that we talked about earlier. Pretty much anything else there, we actually had some reductions in the duty areas, but most of all the other increases were associated with employee costs.
And just to point out, that victim advocate is nowhere near that total adjustment. That's also equivalent to salary increases, just for clarification, that's not a ninety-seven thousand dollar decision.
That's a, that's a two dollar an hour increase from existing.
I'm going to clear that up.
Existing employees plus the cost of things that happen. Magistrate Court, we've got the, the two dollar an hour increase and we have an increase for magistrate judges. The pay structure on the assistant magistrates were changed last year and with the state increases, we're going to see an additional increase in those associate magistrate and power there too. So we had an additional, we're, we're going to end up a little bit short for two, between three, so there's going to be, we're going to go over the forty-eight thousand that was budgeted last year because I didn't budget enough. I thought I understood how the pay was going to work and then it changed a little bit different than how I anticipated. So that adjustment's been taken into consideration plus the adjustment that we made for two, between twelve.
Alyssa, okay. Magistrate Court, that's Judge Smith.
That's Judge Smith.
Okay. I, he was, I heard him on the news on the radio. He was talking about streamlining and changing, doing it all like paper forms and going to electronics.
That's right.
Has he mentioned anything?
If you'll recall, Judge Hubbard, well, actually Judge Johnson, they put that process into, he started looking at the wheels moving on that, with all that new face management software for them just before Judge Johnson got sick. And they had put it in the basic system and got it up and running, but they didn't have all the components of it up and running. So Judge Hubbard was in the process of getting those, some of those things done and they all, I think Judge Smith is going to follow through with getting that system fully implemented. And so it has the ability, when you come into the magistrate office, of filling out the forms electronically, maximum cut down of the light, the hand paper, but filling out forms and that kind of stuff. And it has the ability to do electronic warrants and several other things that we're not utilizing at this point, but he can, so I think we have the right amount of structure there to do what he needs to do.
Okay. I would, we got the money there.
We approved, actually the last year approved about fifty thousand for when Judge Hubbard went into the magistrate court and makes a change as far as computer equipment stuff that he needed and like right now, Judge Smith needs some office furniture because the furniture that before was Judge Johnson, then Judge Hubbard brought his own. So we, we still have funds that we set aside last year, I believe we voted on, so all that still, he does not need extra at this point.
And I spoke with Judge Smith yesterday, he gave him, actually gave him his budget, which he had not seen, but Judge Hubbard and I, he had developed his budget, so I want to have the time on my own trying to be the sign.
I was supposed to do it.
And, well, just a, just a reminder. So Judge Smith and I talked yesterday and I told him that he needed, if he saw anything here that was different than what he needed, he would know, but I, I feel like he'll be able to work with this and also we get a later fact that we had some extra money if he needed that too. So I think we got things in place for him to be able to make the changes he needs to make.
Okay. Thank you.
Prodigy Court, we're adding the dollar and a half that the chief clerk, the back twenty, the chief clerks are making and then we're doing the regular pay increases for them. Now, this budget can actually see a decrease again. So this is where we're pulling out the program expense for Carroll County mental health advocates and moving it over to that grant funding. So that's why I'm seeing a reduction in the budget. So this is more reflective of what it actually takes just to run the prodigy court as opposed to run the prodigy court in Carroll County mental health advocates. So we are seeing an increase in our computer services there. They doubled their maintenance fee from three hundred dollars to six hundred dollars to it. And that, that same software that we're using, it's a, it's a different product, but same company that we're using in magistrate court. And she tends to do some work in the mental health court and so she wants some additional training for that, so we increased her training on that.
So being able to bring the clerk to match up at court, that's taken into consideration that, that they were going to get two dollars. So it's really three and a half dollars to bring them up?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. All right. Next department, Juvenile Court, and we have a similar situation with the young people in that they were running the grant fund for Juvenile Wellness Court and for Family Treatment Court through the Juvenile Court budget and now we removed those about two hundredths of weight down, we'll see a, a reduction of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which leaves an overall reduction in, in the cost of running Juvenile Court. But there again, you're, you're seeing more accurate when, when it actually costs to run just the Juvenile Court without those, without the Wellness Court and the Family Treatment Court expenses being associated with that. And then the one separate line item is the A A for Juvenile Court that we pay as a contractor. We're seeing the public defender as the chairman saying her increase of that seventy-five thousand dollars to just match what we did for the District Attorney and there, even I don't have her initial request wise, but.
Her request is fifty-three thousand, six hundred twenty-one dollars less, so I guess we add seven, five, then three, six, twenty-one real quick.
About a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty, something like that.
We both had about the same dollar amount request and then we just took it there.
Right.
I was just going to say, we've been very impressed that they're trying to increase those budgets there, so I feel good that we've made a lot of strides probably in the last, what, three years.
I, I, I agree with you. I think there's, there's been a lot of support from the county and those offices have, have been very appreciative of what we've done and I'm not sure that they've always been the only divisions that, I think they, they both were very appreciative of what we've done this year and what we've done in the past to help get their funding up to where it needs to be.
Alyssa, I guess we're going to, the chairman, we're going to leave them where they are until we get to the administration building. Are we going to move them out too?
I'm moving them out for a minute now. Yes, they are moving it over to nine ninety-seven vision road. So we only have their rent in here for the full year because we don't have that in July first, August first, September first. Plus whatever rent we don't use, we could use as expenses to, like nine ninety-seven vision road or accommodate for their office payment. But yes, they are moving it in time and order. This time next year, we will not be paying rent for the public defender.
That's what I'm saying. That's where I was going with that question.
And, well, we, we still will be paying utilities because that'll be a portion of what we're paying over there. Now, part of what we anticipate being able to see once they move over there is that our IT will start functioning as their IT department since they'll be in, in our building. So the line of maintenance can practice services that, a good portion of that's their IT. So I feel like that number will go down to a certain degree and then we'll pick up that building repairing maintenance will be included in the maintenance of the building at nine ninety-seven. So the rent, the building repairing maintenance, and possibly some of their telephone expense could go down because that includes their internet. And we think that the internet charges for nine ninety-seven are only pretty much in line with what we're paying in college students. So even though they, we will be paying for internet services, that's going to spread over all departments, so the price per department could, could go down there too. So we will definitely realize some efficiencies by moving that building.
Okay, good. So I think they, they have other contract services other than just IT?
They do. They, they've got a copier that I think they pay a, a maintenance, you know, and I'm not sure, you know, we've always just given them the money and they kind of split it out to pay it for whatever they need. So we'll probably need to sit down and have a lot of discussion with them next year about what their statistics need to go.
Okay. Thank you.
On the sheriff, the, the biggest thing they ask for with the payment increases, the city Carroll County did a two dollar an hour increase already this year for their police. And every time a local law enforcement agency gives a substantial payment increase, it puts more pressure on the, the sheriff to keep his position still.
Is this the same, Alyssa, two dollar an hour as, as our budgeting, two dollar an hour, full-time, dollar fifty, part-time?
Well, I don't know whether they get part-time, they get two dollars an hour just for their police.
Okay.
And then they anticipate, from what I understand, I, I haven't seen their budget or their proposed budget, but from what they, from what I understand, they're proposing on two dollars, if everybody wants to see a hundred percent increase in addition to the two dollars that they already give it to their police.
But sorry, the sheriff's question here, the seven hundred forty-two thousand increase is a two dollar an hour?
That, that's right.
Okay.
That's correct. Yes, on our side, that is correct.
Okay.
How are the utilities going up seventy thousand?
We're just seeing an increase in utility costs.
So you, you've just reflected that, that like you said earlier, to what actually are this year so far?
Correct. Right. And, and, you know, we've, we've seen the big increases in their medical services expense last year, we're seeing it with them this year.
Do we have a breakdown on, and I understand if somebody goes in and has high blood pressure, I mean, but like mental health and stuff, have we broken any of that down? And what I'm going with is we keep talking about all these grants and, you know, a lot of, I guess, mental health grants that are being gone after specifically as it relates to the court systems. And I'm just wondering if there's any caveats in those grants that would help on the, you know, the medication side, where we're making accommodations and doing things through running them through the, the court system, but the physical components of things that they require? I'm just curious because that's such a large amount. I know the sheriff's office has no control over that. I mean, it could be two billion dollars and they have no control over it. It's just a question of, we've, we've been doing such a good job on the grant side, I just wonder if there's a component that we could try to figure out for that as well.
The sheriff's office is working on breaking out that, the, the cost for mental health. We've not done that in the past, or to my knowledge, we haven't done that in the past, but they have requested the current provider to give some more specific services for mental health. They have also talked with Judge Simpson and Judge Simpson's working directly with them on developing some programs and, and hopefully pursuing some grant funding for those programs. He has identified that in a major area in the jail that needs attention and so he understands the cost of keeping people in jail and he's trying to develop plans along with the sheriff's office of how, you know, there's a pipeline, you got to keep the community safe. You got to keep the people in jail safe and you got to keep the, the mental health, people with mental health issues, you got to keep them safe. So how do we do that best? And Judge Simpson and the sheriff's office are working on a plan to, to try to come up with a way to keep all those things in mind and hopefully be able to pursue some grant funding to implement.
That sounds good.
It's, it's a, you know, it's hard to say what the biggest challenge is in, in our county, but mental health has to be one of the biggest things we see here today, or at least how many days, it impacts so, so many different things.
We're a highly medicated society now too.
Correct. And, and sometimes those medications don't work well in there, so, or if they're not taking them, then you have other issues. Getting all that to be in, in the court.
Alyssa, I don't want to, I don't want to stress this out. You and I have had some conversations over salaries versus total package. And when we get done with all this budget stuff, I'd like for you and me to sit down because if you look at, if you look at what you take home from the county versus some of the cities around here, we're actually on par and because of, it's because of the package that we offer at the county and I'd like to kind of sit down because I plan to take that show on the road.
The correctional institute, we've got just a salary increases there, the, the other big increase is in food and kitchen supplies and they are very closely regulated on what they can provide, the nutrition. And they're coming up with plans to keep the nutritional advocate here, that maybe offers some different options that are not. They think that maybe offer some different options that are not as expensive. But the rationale, uh, we're projecting about a sixty thousand dollar increase. And that's re, that's reflecting of kind of where we are right now and which, which is good.
Anybody want us to know where that number is derived from? All I got to do is go out to eat and go to the grocery store and they'll be able to say where that line of income came from.
No, I don't know if you know.
So please, um, correctional administration, I, I know we're down a lot of COs. Do we know how many we're down and, and is this a budget inclusive of possibly filling those positions? Or is it maintaining status quo as we are now or what?
This budget is fully funded. So every position we have is included in this salary line. Uh, and it, and I don't know where we are as of today. I think, um, last week I spoke with the HR director and we were down, I believe, twelve positions.
But was, if we said we have a full house of inmates now, I mean, we've all got, probably complaints about trash and needing the inmates for painting and blah, blah, blah. So if we have a full house of inmates, but we are even very jeopardized if we don't have the COs in place to handle those inmates and get jobs done, like litter pickup and painting and that kind of thing. So that's why primarily I wonder, are we, yes, fully funding the position? And, and what is the, the status maybe of getting those COs involved? Why is it so difficult to, I know you're not the CO expert, but, uh, are we moving toward getting them filled or is there any hope of that? So that we can get inmates out and do the work we kind of need to have done on the main street?
They're trying every day. I've got job clear, there's flyers on Facebook. Um, Otis has sent me several things. It's across the state. State of Georgia's way down. Um, people just don't want to be correctional officers. So it's not just Carroll County's problem. It is, um, across the board. So they have signs up at one sixteen, they have signs up at one thirteen. I mean, it is a constant daily, um, and I, it's not helpful when you're talking about third grade class, but oh, I've been on the show talking about county government as well as careers in government, trying to plant the seeds. So yes, we can't have a third grader work for us today, but trying to plant the seeds of people going into public safety. So, um, you're right, we have the problem of no, no inmates for a while. Now we have the problem of no COs taking inmates out. So, um.
And I think another, another part of that on that category as far as how to attract and get them into that industry is especially, uh, we were having the problem before COVID as well, but really since COVID, a lot of people have been able to upgrade their job status, even maybe their skills because of everyone looking for employment. And you take them, taking the, uh, you know, prisoners out on buses with no air. Uh, they're out there in the hundred degree heat as well. And so I think just the attraction of that on top of just the law enforcement side, and I agree totally. We've got a total, a separate issue of trying to get all of these inmates out and doing work, but just on the recruiting side. I've, I've heard that that's some of the component as well. You know, why would I come to work for this paid job, sit on a bus with a hundred degree weather when I can go to an air conditioner for the same amount? Because now, because of things in society, I've been able to upgrade from a, where, you know, my skill level is at. And that's across board in everything.
Yeah, I, and I have to put the recruitment of those positions home to people that know a lot more about it than I do. Because I, um, I just know that it is, uh, you know, the, the old department of corrections, I think, has the same, or not, maybe not the exact same situation, but a very similar situation in that they're down, sitting out the city.
I was talking to Otis at that federal summit thing and he was saying, I mean, that the attitude of the public toward law enforcement or CEOs or whatever, especially with all this two block going on with the train and general account and people getting shot and all that crap. I mean, it, it detracts from people wanting to go into those fields, plus the weather and so on. So it's a, it's a bummer. But meanwhile, I'm trying to back up. I mean, it's just, it's too bad really that, that we can't somehow get people into that. But I, it's a, it's a PR light for sure.
Right.
I will go to reverses. I mean, I mean, you know, we're, I mean, law enforcement is getting a, an empty man wrapped up. They go with a few mad apples and I, I hate that, but I'd like to get her. The job of the county does too and it certainly affects us.
Over to, uh, fire, um, we've got the change from part-time to full-time. And then we got the twelve kilo audit drivers that are included in the ten. And then I didn't, I didn't know that either, but we got the increase in the deputy chief. They, too. And then, uh, we got a couple of workers comp plans in our department that potentially could, um, drive our workers comp cost up. So we could produce an increase in there for that. And it's still checking on whether she feels like that's an adequate number or whether we possibly could adjust that. And so, um, they, they've also asked for some training software, getting some scheduling software. Uh, the increase of two thousand, uh, computer services are for the maintenance, the, the monthly maintenance on those things, uh, the initial payment on those, uh, we're going to look at it and possibly do it at the end of the year and get them sent in place for. They probably requesting about a hundred thousand dollars in, uh, equipment and software that we would like to purchase at the end of the year anyway. Um, their vehicle repair maintenance, we're, we're going up on, um, some of the, the crumper, the older crumblers and, uh, the two-way trucks that we have are starting to be, it's amazing to live. And it's, every time we can't even shop, you know, it's ten thousand, twelve thousand. It's expensive to, to replace parts on these things. So, um, we anticipate that. Now we're keeping some, some trucks. Now we've got station seventeen, eighteen open. Uh, we've got some of our older trucks that are in service. Um, they still are functional and fully operational. It's, it's just that we may have to spend a little bit more on repair maintenance on them to keep them in the condition that we need them to be to provide the services that we're asking from them.
So I know, although the fire department has come here with some special requests, I just wanted to make sure that our budget includes as much as possible what, what they need as far as things like hoses getting older and needing to be replaced. And like you said, uh, increases in, uh, rebuilding a fire truck engine and that kind of thing. And they're, you know, trying to utilize and increase the longevity of the equipment they have. And is that in here? So the ways that we might anticipate what's coming up?
Well, the, the hoses, we, we're just all quite, I think we paid, we bought about a hundred thousand dollars for our hoses last year. Uh, they got a backup to straighten up what they needed, replace all the hoses that, that they needed. Uh, I mean, this was, this is the budget that was submitted by the fire chief and he and the deputy chief and his staff went through it pretty, pretty closely. I mean, I, I think they would take any amount, maybe we give them in addition to this. But, you know, we have to be reasonable about, like I said, we had about a hundred thousand dollars that was in this budget that we took out that we can, kind of one-time expenses, some, some equipment that they needed. Uh, they were, I think, on their, uh, breathing equipment that, that they could buy, some equipment where they could do some of the maintenance on it instead of having to pay it outside from the dealer. And so we're looking to buy that equipment with some of the year-end money so they can do their own maintenance. Uh, they, they keep some of the costs down there. Uh, there was some equipment that they needed for the, um, uh, fire inspector, I think, um, Nick, Nick Turner?
That's correct.
Is he an inspector, fire inspector? Okay. He, he needed some equipment to do some of the things that he does and, and we have that in here and done. So there were some one-time expenses that I tried to pull out of the regular operating budget that we could buy. And then we wouldn't need that one again next year. But yeah, I mean, I, I think they would accept some additional funding, but we have to be reasonable with, uh, what we requested from the other city.
Chairman, I know one of the things that you talked about, um, in years prior is really trying to have a maintenance, um, facility in this, not waiting to see if we got money left over in the squad and trying to invest it. So we're talking about a four thousand dollar increase, um, a twenty twenty-four change. And like equipment repairs and maintenance, which is a little bit different, but I guess you could somewhat categorize that together. But that's basically wiping that half minus five thousand. So here again, we can have money to anything and everything, but especially some of our older stations, you know, we talked about these places run twenty-four seven, right? So it's even that much more wear and tear. The wall might need to be painted or a new microwave. Or, you know, maybe we do some more proactive things on the roofs instead of waiting until it falls in, so to speak. So I guess my question to you is that's an item, especially with many stations as we have, that I would definitely be in support of increasing if we could balance it somewhere. But I just, I knew that was something that you had always spoken about. So I was curious if you were familiar with that number or you thought it needed to be increased?
So we have, um, we're in the process of right now doing a serious assessment of all the buildings because there can, um, a leaky roof, it's just dark, hasn't been leaking for several years. And we're still going to do some catch-up. Uh, and there can, you know, you look at this amount, so yes, I would love to increase that, but there can. Um, that requires a higher budget, that requires a buy-in if possible, no rollback. And I don't think we're there yet. Uh, we have made a lot of repairs in the last couple of years. We're getting ready to, well, just be able to improve two old repairs. Uh, we are lucky again this year, we're going to have some area funds that Alyssa and I are preparing. I've got a staff right here, uh, things we'd like to repair, things we'd like to take care of. And then when we figure out how much we have left over again from this budget because we've not filled spaces, uh, in voice spots, then we can bring it to you and say, okay, these sort of things we requested again, here's what we believe, well, here's what I'd like to fund. And then you can say, yay, they whatever. But I would rather, um, not increase this budget anymore at this point. I would, I would love to. We've had these discussions. Um, I don't think we're there yet, but the fact that we're having these conversations we've not had before, um, having the conversation with the fire chief, looking at these buildings, um, it's, we're better off than we were a couple of years ago. So yeah, I would love to increase that, but, um, I, I don't think we're there yet. Um, I think we've got the.
Well, as long as you have a plan, and it sounds like you do, I just want to make sure we're not waiting to get tight somewhere else. I just want to make sure because we have so many of those facilities. And every one of them, if they're running twenty-four seven, I mean, it's just common sense that you've got to do a little more of the key stuff.
It, it is, but, um.
Okay. That, that answers my question.
Yeah, I think we're already tight enough, but, um, there again, if y'all find something that we missed, I actually caught an error on her last weekend. I go, just like, just for joy, like woo-hoo. Um, I caught something, you know, I felt smart for that brief moment. Um, so if y'all see something that we have missed, because we're looking at it all the time, we can easily hit the numbers a little bit wacky ourselves. So I'm, I'm thoroughly open to suggestions. But yes, at least we're having those discussions, we've done an assessment. Uh, but yeah, you're right. I think budgets I look at, I go, how can you fix something for five thousand dollars? And we know the roof recently cost, you know, sixteen. So, but we're, we're getting there. We're having a conversation that we never had before, looking at long-term that we never had before.
And I agree that we, going down rather than when we continue to look at the building repair maintenance expense line and equipment repair expense line, uh, because they were so significantly underfunded. Uh, I don't, you know, it's not one year fixed. And we, and we have, y'all have made commitments over the last few years to continue to increase those lines. Um, we're not where we need to be, but we're getting, we're getting closer. I mean, every year y'all make tremendous steps and getting us to where we need to be. And, um, so I think you're right. We're, we're not where we need to be, but we're, we're headed in the right direction.
Well, um, another, we just finished the CI, so I'm kind of backtracking a little bit on that. How will we bring it to you like at the end of the year? They need a new generator. I think it's about eighty-five thousand dollars. The last time we bought a generator was thirty years ago. So in a way, we don't really want to build an eighty-five thousand dollar generator every year into the CI's budget. So we're going to have those oddball things, but by doing this budget and, and planning on a contingency fund to take care of some of those once every thirty-year things. But yes, um, we're very liking the end in a way to have an end of the year, um, extras. But in an ideal world, we'd be totally employed and then we wouldn't have these. So we, right now it's kind of a little bit less.
Yeah, if we, I mean, we have, um, left, if you will, with, uh,
I don't employ.
President, and, and yeah, I'm on the positions and I have time. But I, I would like to, to move, now that I have a recent question initially, because I, I would like to see us build in instead of having a fire chief or whoever, uh, come to us and say, oh, man, I need twenty-four thousand for this or, you know, forty thousand or a new something, something. To, to have that built into the budget or maybe, maybe increase our contingency or something. So that, because we know those things are going to happen, I mean, with that, it would be, I think it would be nice to have that.
And I think, and I think this board is obviously very supportive of every department, especially the buyer. If something happens or breaks, we're going to fix it. My point is that these first responder requirements are unique in that they, they, they work and they live in the same environment. And committing, uh, a value to be better for that than anybody on this board. But that's my point, you know, if every year we think that the walls need to be painted, not thinking of things just to spend money, but in other words, you're living in this environment, you're working in it twenty-four hours, seven days a week, just trying to build in, yes, if the air conditioner gets blown up, we all know we're going to replace that, but just these things of keeping the environment fresh of the day. And, and that's kind of my conversation. And that was the whole point, I think, of why the chairman really pushed in the past few years is that we needed to get that line up and take care of it. Let's don't wait twelve years for, you know, something to completely blow up. Let's, let's try to keep things maintained as we go. And I'm just a big proponent of that, mainly because, not that all of our departments are not special, but when you live in it twenty-four hours a day, that's a big deal. And it's, it's, it's the next level of why it's even that much more important to keep it updated.
Alyssa, I have a question about, just kind of went back through, looking at fuel and oil, all this, all of these things. Is that, is that fuel and oil that's coming from a common pool at Public Works? Or is that also, I mean, do they go to pumps outside and buy fuel?
Public, the, the majority is coming from Public Works.
Okay.
But yes, they do go to pumps that are not at Public Works because you can burn a lot of, like, the Rickfire, Temple Fire, um, Tass, Bow. Um, you know, they, they all go to local stations for, for some of their fuel. Now, if they make careful, they're going to stop and fill up at Public Works tanks where we get a better. where we get a better price on fuel and, but, um, there are often areas of fuel being purchased outside of Public Works.
Okay.
If there's someone's away on train that's thirty-five hours away.
That's right.
They're also going to fill up.
That's right.
Well, that's what I give as one of those answers. That's one of the questions, sorry, you have to answer to me, I just want everybody out here to know that we're not, we don't drive thirty miles to build a car up and then go back and bring, you know, we do allow them to make a credit card or whatever, they can go to service station.
One of the good things though, that we're able, in my opinion, that we're able to balance some of that out while, yeah, you don't want to drive it thirty minutes away, but no matter where they're pumping and they got a car, they can, it can be tax deductible, but we're buying it obviously wholesale at Public Works, so you're adding even additional value that there's, many times, you know, it may be worth a fifteen or twenty minute drive, maybe not thirty, but.
Indecently, you know, if the, if, I guess without an answer to call, um, right outside, you know, around Old Town or, or even they can tour around the river somewhere and they finish the call up, then they drive to Public Works, fill the engine up and then go back. Um, but yeah, I mean, I think they have to use their judgment to make that choice from that. Um, the next thing is emergency medical services in the corner, um, the EMS medical, um, ambulance, I put the increase in there for the contract that we signed last year, which was CPI plus fifty thousand dollars and then, uh, most of the quarter expenses related to, um, talent increases.
And then this medical services, that was Tanner now versus Steve Allen?
I, I think we're still playing a question of the ambulance that I, I, yeah, Tanner is the owner of that business.
So we don't expect any more change?
Well, we, I mean, this is what the contract that we signed, they restored and called for, so they took that contract.
Okay.
And so it's CPI each year plus fifty thousand dollars for determining the contract.
What is determined the contract?
Uh, I believe it's a contract in, uh, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three would be the first year, so we're getting ready to complete the first year of the contract.
And is the increase built into that contract each year?
Yes, it's CPI plus fifty thousand dollars per year.
Just a side note that last year that we had negotiated with them, you know, I had spoken with them and they agreed to come off, um, an initial fifty thousand, so really that kind of makes it like we didn't have to pay it this year, so I was appreciative that they did that as far as, you know, what the total cost is, they did come off that additional fifty after the negotiations, so I thought that was maybe a good key, kind of in the back of your mind, look at this, we're only paying CPI this year.
Right, well, and, and you had to go back to last year to really understand the full impact of the negotiation because they, I think they were asking for quite a bit more last year than what we agreed to, you know?
We haven't done an increase for them in years, there again, it was like set price for years, now we've built something that's realistic, it, you don't get that surprise bill five years down the road, so it's a, um, a realistic contract.
You know, you don't think your mega hurts, uh, that budget stays the same, then animal services, um, we've got the increase of the rate and then the part time, see others to cover the weekends, um.
And exactly how, I mean, not be in any of the budget area, I just don't know, just that by now, uh, how, how is this going to be covered? I mean, what do we mean by cover weekend? Is the person physically going to be there to operate the phone or take calls or is it going to be outside?
No, no, it's going to be, it's going to be a corrections officer and he goes and picks up twelve inmates and brings them over to the animal, uh, to the shelter and actually cleans the inside of the shelter.
Okay, so this is the animal services that we just covered in that?
Correct, correct, that's the one that can solve the problem, uh, at the, uh, weather.
Let's fingers crossed that someone flies for the job.
Yeah, yeah, and is there anything in here, I mean, I had a discussion with Christie about putting something in the budget or letting us know what she needs so that on the animal control side, that could be covered, if you will, uh, on the weekends because I've got, I probably have a call every couple of months about something that it, it's a off-hour kind of call that wasn't handled and blah, 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 uh, so I didn't know what, do we have something in here that actually addresses things that occurred on the weekends and how that's going to be handled and?
Well, if, if we cover, you know, if we did twenty-four seven, I don't know.
Well, we don't have to go that far, but I mean, we don't have to have six staff there on weekends, but I would say somebody that, I, I guess I'm a little bit baffled because I had this conversation a couple of times and yet I don't see anything in here, there's been no information provided about what are we doing or what can be done for weekend coverage?
We, we would have to add some, add some heads, I think we'd have to probably add ten heads to.
And I've had another discussion on that for her too, y'all.
Yeah, we discussed it.
Because she can't even keep four people, the positions she has funded now, she can't even keep fully staffed, so I'm sure she'd be most appreciative if one of you wants to, the board wants to give her two more positions than the funding, um, but knowing that we may be funding two positions that she cannot fill, so I think, um, yes, any department would love for you to give them more money on something, it's just I think she's being realistic and not asking for that at this point in time because she can't even fill the current positions.
So what is coverage for the public from five o'clock Friday to eight o'clock Monday?
Emergency calls, so if you call nine one one and you, you've got an animal that's out of control, you can't, you need an emergency animal control to roll on it and they will call, but you've got people that are on the call and they can call in and bring them in to take care of the situation, but it has to be an emergency situation.
And that animal control person is on call or?
Yeah, and his control person is on call. So if, if there's just a dog out roaming around and they, they're not going to, they're not going to move on that, but if there's a dog that's being aggressive or another animal that's being aggressive, then they would, they would call the.
Well, that didn't happen, I'm just telling you, that was an exact situation and a call came into that Friday, it wasn't handled Friday, it wasn't handled Saturday, it wasn't handled Sunday, it was called in again Monday, it wasn't handled Monday, and it was handled Tuesday and by Tuesday it bit somebody and then we're in a whole different situation. And that's my reason for bringing that up in the first place is what is the protocol for over the weekend and if that's the protocol, then it ain't working.
Did they, did they call nine one one or did they call animal, did they call animal control?
On Friday, they called animal control, and on Monday, they called animal control.
Okay.
So I mean, it's, it wasn't handled, I don't know what to do about it, but I, I don't like getting those calls and I wrote a fairly limited email about how the situation could have been ameliorated and handled before on Tuesday, some, someone actually got bit and then it was handled, but, you know, we're a day late, dollar short, and so that's why I had a conversation about what can we do for weekend coverage and I used to say, I'll say no, I mean, I.
Well, we'd have to have a couple of heads and we need to find them.
Well, I don't know, uh, do we need to have a couple of that, I mean, uh, do we, or do we just need to have someone that's on call that will actually do the handling of it when it needs to be addressed? I mean, I, from what you explained, it, it sounds good, I mean, uh, but it just didn't work, so I don't know, we need to add more.
I mean, if you want full coverage on the weekends, you got to have officers, that's the only, we just don't, I mean, four officers can't cover seven days a week.
Or can you have a rotating, I mean, how many animal control officers do we have?
Four.
When is full, we have four?
I don't, I don't know, I mean, we currently, I think we've only got three right now, but.
So, you know, can one of those be on call and just rotate one of those three who's on call during the weekend?
And that's what we do, we think they're, they're on, they're on call, I don't know why they didn't get a call, I mean, I don't, I don't.
Exactly, I don't, you know, and I'm not picking on you, I'm just saying, hey, that's the situation, and well, from what I hear, it, it, it sounds good, but it is, it isn't working, at least it didn't work in this situation and, and the bad thing about it was, man, it, it ended up in somebody getting hurt and then we, but, I mean, we're too late, so I, I, I just, I just wish that there was some, it seems like my explanation and discussion with, with her goes with the email when I talk about Director Christie Owen, I mean, it went nowhere because I don't see anything addressed or any insurance that it will work better next time, but when I had a constituent call and they say that they informed them on Friday and it wasn't handled Friday, it wasn't handled Saturday or Sunday and they called back Monday and it wasn't addressed Monday, but finally Tuesday they went out there and, and somebody had got bit, then I think we need to make sure that something is handled, right? Animal control is the situation where I think we need to make sure that things get addressed like they need to get addressed and I've had repeated calls, like I say, one every couple of months about problems with animal control and people calling in and nothing getting done or them having communication back from whoever enters the phone, but some excuse of why they can't do what the customer needs them to do and, you know, taxpayers are being billed. I have another lady call, um, horse in the road and she said several cats had been dumped off, some of the kittens, and, and she called animal control, didn't do anything about it, then, look, she said she just hated to see starving outside of the road, so she fed them and called animal control again and animal control finally came out and said, well, since you feed them, they're your cats and we can't do anything, but that's ridiculous. I, I just, but, but I, I say these things and it's like, whoop-dee-doo, and nothing gets done, so I'm expecting more calls over the next couple of weeks about animal control. I, I don't know what needs to be done, something needs to be done.
I mean, I said the citizen didn't drop off the cats, we didn't.
Oh, that's right, but we can't help that.
We helped that, so maybe you need to sit down with Zach, our county attorney that deals with these state laws, because a lot of this is dictated by state laws. Next thing is, and I think we'll take a break for lunch, is do you want to request two more, um, animal control officers?
I want to request, uh, request that Christie Owens suggests what the board would for weekend coverage.
That would be, that's what she's again, so, ma'am, are you asking for us to investigate, find out how much this is and then figure out if the rollback might not be as much, maybe a little less, so are you, I'm asking, are you asking for that to be considered in this budget?
First of all, I'm, I'm asking that if we have a system in place and people are on call, that they actually are on call and something is done on the weekend, if it takes another position or two to cover the weekend, I'd like to see information about that and why, maybe not via calls when I come on the weekend, it takes two positions, I'm, I'm not convinced that based on what I know now, that the two positions or eighteen positions are going to do anymore, they don't go out there and do something about it. I mean, we could fund six hundred dollars more dollars, but if they don't actually go and pick up what constituents are complaining about until Tuesday, then I don't know, I mean, what?
Well, they get on call or request an emergency, so you're only going to have an emergency on the weekend, if you want everyday coverage, like Monday, Friday, we need to put two more in the budget, are you requesting that?
I'm requesting that in cases of emergency particularly, when the protocol is in place for it to be handled, that it be handled. Can I ask a question before we get to that?
Yes, yes, we're not discussing for the day, it's for lunch, kind of a rest break, I'm thinking.
I don't see it in the budget and I don't know how it comes up and I know how it used to be handled, but, uh, I don't see anything in here for like large animal, animal, right? You know, if we have to do something, if we got a horse somewhere that's starving to death, how do we handle that?
I think that now probably, but I think we should be, we have several cases of those over the years.
Yeah, I know, but I don't know, we don't have a place to house them, so we'd have to take them somewhere, is that, anyway, we got a higher professional ranger to have the animal load up, starving horse and take it somewhere, that is the budget, are we covered?
Yeah, we've done it before, yes, and I think we have, we do have a barn, so the horse could go there or if we see the valuable tension, that does come out of the budget and then second thing is we do have some other, um, horse people, that's not quite the correct term, but who have taken some of these animals for us, but.
Right.
Um, so yes, we have to keep these animals before it goes to court and.
My understanding is on larger animals, I guess the sheriff has jurisdiction, if you will, but he's contracting inter-family, if you will, with us to be able to handle certain things, so I think there's the ability, flex, flexibility with that.
That's correct, but between the sheriff's office, Public Works and the animal control, they handle it, uh, depending on what type of animal it is, what issue. So the answer is yes, we got the cover.
As far as I know, we have it covered right now, we haven't, I haven't heard of any calls that we haven't been able to respond to or that we need more.
In Carroll County, I guess we're still rolled up, one of my neighbors thought of you bullin' and wound up in my woods, so, boy, you.
And we do have a farm at Animal Shelter, at the Animal Shelter, that's what you're talking about, one horse, one bull, one cow, if you go out and just herd twelve horses and they're all starving to death, that's a different scenario, but just making the point of clarification, we do have the ability to take him one, if you will, um, I'm not saying that they don't want to keep it there forever, but if it's a mercy situation and it be brought somewhere, they have the capability, because I've been out back physically and have seen it. And sometimes like there's a rooster fighting, it's an area where they had taken a bunch of roosters and the rooster didn't go home with other animals, so they couldn't, they didn't have the ability to house them, but they were able to, uh, contract with a, uh, third party who had a farm and was willing to take them until the, uh, hearing came about, which can take a long time, so this hearing's come about where the judge finally took animals from the person and then, um, the Animal Shelter was able to adopt those animals out of that person who had been willing to take them for them, so they work it out with farm owners a lot of times to house the animals for them.
So we have rooster, too?
It's a trick.
We're going to a break at this point. All right, it is, um, twelve, eleven, um, y'all want thirty minutes or do we want longer?
Take care of it?
Yeah.
We got a call.
Kansas calls back to order following lunch, we are on Department thirty-nine twenty of Emergency Management, I'll turn it back over to Alicia please.
Okay, the emergency management, uh, during the pandemic, but it's increasing with the wage increases, they did ask for additional five thousand dollars, uh, where continuously replacing batteries in the weather sirens. replacing batteries in their weather tines, uh, and those values are continuing to increase. So, that will help with the, help offset some of that cost. Public works, uh, we've got the salary increases there. Uh, we have not used a temporary labor person, so the director asked that that money be moved, um, down into the building prepared maintenance line, uh, to get them, their building starting to get older now, and they're having to, uh, start doing some maintenance, um, so he needed some additional money in that building prepared maintenance line. Uh, we also were looking at some new software for the sign shop, and, uh, maybe about twelve hundred dollars a year for the software maintenance, uh, on that software. And then, uh, we did increase the gas and oil line by seventy-five thousand dollars, um, to kind of get in mind where we are this year. I think, um, the price of fuel is a little over what it was last year, um, so we're continuing to pay a little bit more for our fuel.
I don't know if that'll happen this year or not, but school boards are moving out from there. Are we gonna sort all that? That's our building over there with Bus Barn is, isn't it?
Yeah.
Are, are we gonna sort all that? Is that gonna, is that what we're gonna encourage the cost?
We, we haven't really talked about it. I don't know what their timeline is on getting out of there.
And what the premises that building is gonna be, so I think that's next year.
Yeah, I can imagine them building anything in less than a year.
I would like that.
Next department is solid waste collection, um, from the trash expense, uh, trash hauling. We've had a CPI increase with GFL, uh, that was in their contract. And then, SLM, uh, is willing to pay the fees to the peo, to the people that work at the convenience centers, so they have asked for an increase to cover that.
So, this covers, this is all inclusive, so this is the staff they're employing, this is the trucking transfer from the centers to the transfer station, and then this is, um, transportation from the transfer station to the actual tipping location and the tipping fee. So, this is all inclusive of those.
Now, the tipping fee is just what Carroll County pays to Carroll County Solid Waste. So, this is the fee on the garbage that's haul from the convenience center to the transfer station. So, that's all that tipping fee is. Uh, there's another tipping fee that's paid by Solid Waste when it's carried to the actual land.
So, this is only partial, I guess, of what I'm saying, of the equation of where we're getting at with the cost.
This is the part that, that's related to Carroll County. Uh, this is also in that convenience center, it's been a solid expense, it's related to the power bills and building maintenance and water that costs around the convenience center, to the maintenance and convenience centers.
But we should hope that that's washing out if we're, if we're charging our rates for that claim. But with the commercial side of it, my point...
That's right. It goes back in and out of Solid Waste.
So, I have a question. I get the question all the time. My best friend down there, about getting that mountain station on your road open full-time. How can I just get one day added a week to it? Is that something, how does that work?
I would, I would think with Jack, I found that, that is more of contracting with, you know, someone that they have employed, uh, who doesn't have to pay the tipping fees if someone's coming out there, you know, doesn't work on their schedule. I think that's a, a jackal intention that could really take the frozen on with that and what it may or may not cost to do that.
We, we would need to add money into this budget to be able to do that.
What am I thinking of? Firstly, just contract, what's, what's the term, uh, for the GFL and SLM?
Y'all have heard of GFL last year, that, yeah, I think it has a renewal on like three or five years, and it had the CPI...
I think it's three years on GFL, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I can't remember all those names, but it was, um, basically the CPI increase.
I guess, I, and we've gone through this before, but this, these, uh, garbage costs of garbage on Solid Waste and stuff just keeps going up and up and up. Uh, I guess, I mean, we're just kinda stuck with the, at least three-year contract or something.
Well, that's what we've done to do. There, there are not a lot of options. I mean, the GFL is really the only, um, company around us that does that. The, the only option that I have thought of is potentially bringing it in-house and buying the trucks, uh, to do the transfers with. Uh, but I looked at it last year, Charles and I, I went through the numbers on whether we'd call the other trucks, run the trucks, and, um, maintain them and...
Find the drivers.
And find the drivers, and, uh, it was better to pay the GFL what we're paying than try to take them ourselves.
And the cost structure here, and this is not to give GFL a free pass, because we want as competitive a rate as we can get, the cost structure here is not really tied to, to this operation. It's tied to, there's no control on volume. Now, I'm not saying right or wrong or different, but if you bring in, it goes in the right category, you can bring however much you want. Um, and if there's no revenue stream attached to this, so, um, yes, GFL's a part of the equation, but we're not gonna control what's happening through GFL. We're gonna control either by the intake and/or revenue source. And, you know, I know I met with this DOST a couple of times in the last couple of months and trying to get some information from some of the other departments, trying to figure out if we can come up with something that's, um, that the board might be willing to entertain. But this is definitely an on-atrocity that is gonna continue to only increase. It's kinda like the insurance. It just keeps getting us and getting us with these big numbers. But, again, it's not to give GFL a pass, but it's, it's not, in my mind, it's not about a competitive, even though we want competitiveness, you're not gonna, you're not gonna go with another carrier to take a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars a year, is my point.
If they want it.
Do we know? I mean, you know, handling waste, garbage, whatever, I mean, it's, it's done by every county. But, uh, do we know anything about that industry and our, again, the benchmark kinda thing, or are there the same similar things going on in other counties? Or have they come to a solution? Or, I know there are other counties that might have implemented a fee or that kinda thing, but as far as the cost side?
Well, again, now, other counties are doing other things. Uh, in fact, Jacqueline spent the day last week covering other Solid Waste facilities. So, she's in contact with other, other counties and how they're doing things. Uh, the chair in Allenworth and Abbott Clark a couple of years ago, and they actually have their own sorting system. So, they're bringing in all of their trash, and they've got conveyors and, um, people, and they're making goggles out, and they're throwing chickens out, and, uh, they're getting all the paper bound up and, and making it more marketable. Uh, they're, uh, they're, they're plastic jobs. Uh, so, there, there is some other things that we can do, but there's a lot of costs associated with doing that, too. Uh, and at the end of the day, I don't know that, they were, they were probably keeping more trash out of the landfill, but I don't think it was costing any less to do it.
Now, do you remember, um, they are like the cities Carrollton, they have trash pickup. So, in the unincorporated part of Carroll County, you either haul your trash yourself to the convenience center, or you pay someone to do it. So, they actually pick up the trash. Their, their, their convenience centers are recyclable, evidently. They have these little stations all over the county that were just recyclables. So, they actually own and operate their trucks like Carrollton City does. They go around and pick up your trash, and then they bring it in. So, um, yeah, that, that, that was a, that was a huge, huge facility. They're, and she didn't say they were saving any money on it. They were really more on the recyclable, you know. So, instead of contracting with the GFL, they were doing it themselves, all in-house.
One thing that I think we're gonna see, uh, from Commissioner Lee's district, is the convenience center there in Temple, filling from all the open containers, um, to the compactor. I think that would cut down significantly on the amount of trips that's happened to be taken. Now, how much dollar figure that adds up today, I don't know, but I would think over time that would be pretty significant, because those compactors are very efficient. It, you know, being able to cram a lot into one container versus forty open boxes just sitting out there, because they've gotta come and dump each one individually, and only could put so many in the back of that dump before they gotta head out. So, I think that will save over time.
I, I would say, you know, I think that may be a strategy that we could put in at some of the smaller, um, convenience centers. I mean, you wanna work away from the busiest down to the, to the slowest, but there, there may be a couple of other areas that we need to put compactors in that could potentially save us, um, some money on calling.
And one more thing with GFL, Commissioner Reynolds' question about, you know, some other things going on locally. I know in the past couple of years, there's been several locations that gave it communities and different things that GFL wouldn't even go into. And then some of them, they went way up for them to even entertain, because they had other businesses that were making, you know, a lot more money off of. There was also a local municipality who, they had agreed the terms on what they were willing to do off previous years off of a contract and adding so much. And the municipality said that they could do an RFP, and when they did that, GFL was the only company to submit and reply, and they went up significantly more than what they were willing to do, just, you know, off of a handshake, so to speak, on continuing the contract. So, that's a very delicate situation with that company. Like I said, I just think so much of it revolves around us giving more of our operations more efficient than it is what they're providing.
Uh, I, I do apologize for putting you on the spot, Alicia, but I, I know you don't know everything, although you've come close to it. But, uh, like, being absent from what the agency comes and presents, or has a discussion, I mean, I'm, we're not privy to that, so I have a lot of questions about strategy, I guess, uh, here and in other locations. I mean, some, some kinda hours, elections, okay, well, you know, what can we do? It's a pretty routine. But when you have things like this, or animal control over there, there's sure strategies or processes or whatever that we might be able to kick around with the department and so on, that, that I'm just absent. So, with, with this being such a cost and going up and up and up each year, yeah, I would, I would like us to put something together that says, hey, here's an alternative that might work, like the compactor. And like you mentioned, getting them in every, or at least most, uh, like, they're local and Hoitsburg and so on, I shouldn't speak for my own district, but, uh, they're fairly busy, and I've had a request, too, that Hoitsburg be open seven days a week and so on. Uh, if it costs a lot more, well, probably not. But if we could get some strategy together so that in a year or whatever, we could have something as an alternative, maybe if compactor costs X amount, it's at least, uh, cheaper than, than Y amount times two, three, four, than what it's created now, so.
Well, I, I know the compactor is almost double their price from the time when, um, bought the first one to the last one we bought. And, um, so they're, they're becoming more and more expensive. But at the end of the day, they, they do, um, hold a considerable amount more trash. But, you know, a specific plane, we would have to get the, the department head and all of that to, um, let us know. And I, I, I feel that she's exploring options. I don't know that she has a, has a dependent plane at this point, but she's obviously exploring options, if she's going out and meeting with other, other transfer stations and seeing what they're doing and how they're doing it. Um, so, you know, she's definitely entertaining this option, as well as all the rest.
I mean, in a way, I feel like, I mean, we can individually be experts in all these departmental areas. So, the department has, if we could get some information in the land areas like this, where they are the experts, then kick around for viable options, that would be terrific. Rather than just sit here and say, oh, yeah, another three hundred thousand, I mean, that's just what's happening. If we could come up with alternatives or strategies, that might be beneficial.
Yeah.
Alicia, are you aware of any other county that does their own, has their own equipment and takes care of it?
I'm not. It hasn't been, had, had this far that we even saw what they were doing. That, um, you know, I don't, I don't know. That's, uh, really something I know a whole lot about.
That's not...
And the other thing, too, to take into consideration is when we had an operational landfill before it was full, I think this conversation could have twisted a hundred and eighty degrees. We might could make, not that we would have the same challenges of hiring people and stuff, but if you were gonna dump in your own tipping fee, so to speak, where you're taking the transfer station, that's a total different dynamic than the world we're in now, where the landfill is, is full and has been full. So, I think if that were the case, there would be a lot more opportunities to explore that we just don't have right now.
I was, I was thinking like, I was, I was wondering if there were any, that's something I thought of Jackie, but where you got three, four counties co-opting one another, and then they own the four, of the four counties own the equipment, and they kind of, you'd have to get a new government to bring it or some kind of, but rather than one county trying to put, put the deal and start a cobbler on trash, you get three or four of them together. Well, now, that's something a little different.
Right.
So...
Well, and, and again, with Carroll County being the land mass size, I think it is, um, that complicates some of our efficiencies, because from Hoitsburg to, um, Kansas, there's a pretty fair amount of distance. I mean, you could take just about an hour to drive from Hoitsburg and go all the way up to about, uh, so, you know, we've got, we've just got a lot of land that we have to cover, so, straight things that like... Well, we've all been to the, uh, kind of the, uh...
Services?
Services.
Observatory services provided?
Yeah. So, we've got the, the Department of Health, uh, in the first category, we left their budget the same. Uh, Big Facts, we've left their budget the same. Uh, the Transit, Transit System, we've left their budget the same. Uh, the Advocates for Local Citizens, we left that the same. The Mel Health Program, Pathways, we left that the same. Uh, then CASA, we left the same. Carroll County Mentee Program, we left the same. Uh, Carroll County Harbor Defense and Stupid Sands, we left the same. Uh, we left Carroll County Town Advocate Program the same. And then that gets us into the Recreation Department. So, we, we discussed earlier, we want to add a gymnastics coordinator out of the rent department, and then we're looking at, um, their food consumption and their labor costs, um, the, the wage increase.
Was, was there, excuse me, was there a packet proposal? We all talked about it in the gymnastics... We all talked about the gymnastics center. There's gonna be tangible things, we're gonna see an increase in revenues, other things, obviously. People coming in and spending money in the community that maybe less person to pinpoint down. But was a part of the packet, did it include what they thought this person was gonna be able to do as far as maybe handling additional things of the revenue stream? Um, would it help cover, I guess, the employee cost? Or is it just a matter of managing what you currently have? And there's not a right or wrong answer. I'm just trying to, in my mind.
Yes, there will be an increase in revenue because they didn't feel like, and they gave me the number. I didn't, I didn't bring it with me, but, uh, they didn't feel like they're going to increase participants on the team gymnastics. And, uh, I think the revenue increase was about three hundred thousand dollars that they expected in the gymnastics. So, it won't totally offset the cost of this person.
So, hopefully, hopefully better manage the current program and then maybe bring the cost down to thirty-two thousand if you're taking the twenty thousand now.
Yeah.
I'm just saying this is a unique opportunity. We, we look at adding staff in a lot of different areas, and, but we have a revenue source to help cover that. Plus, they're gonna help with making things hopefully more efficient. That makes it even easier to absorb, I guess is my point.
Right. It, you, you know, as, as much as we would like to, um, the Rent Department and then Parks Department, either one of those cover the cost of the programs. They are still something that's like tax dollars. So, uh, even though we charge participation fees and, and charge things going to the parks, those things don't cover the cost of running those programs. But to have a, a good community in recreation and beauty parks, um, so, for that, it's still offset by tax dollars.
One, one question, honest and certain, I took a long topic here. Has there been any more discussion about implementing anything of that nature, looking into partnership with the city or anything as far as, uh, facilities?
Uh, I don't know about, I don't know about partnering with the city. Uh, I don't know if there's any discussion as far as that's concerned. As far as our situation, we looked at some possibilities for sites and couldn't find one that would, would work at this point. Uh, but we're, you, you know, we're always looking at opportunities, uh, if we can get some money that's going in the current rent department. Uh, you know, some of that became available, I think it would be in our best interest to do all of it and then potentially we have the area that we possibly can expand something.
I've got, that's, I'm a member of a couple civic organizations and one veterans organization. And they're not a beating of thighs and I'm not a corner, so.
Corner on Pickleball?
On Pickleball. I, I, I didn't know, I didn't know what it was. Mr. Reynolds brought it up, but now, I don't know what's going on. All of a sudden, it's an interest, so I'm, I'm getting cornered on that, so.
Well, remember I can bring you the opportunity to put it at the Ed Mountain Pavilion area and y'all decided not to follow that, so.
That's what I told them. I said that was part of that, that was, it was all family.
Well, our Mayberry County County, they put in quite a nice facility. Information I got from them and, and every coalition of folks that got together and got a federal lot of data, but, uh, and, uh, best I recall, Coweta County spent around a million and a half for that facility and over a three or four year period, uh, based on revenues they're getting from tournaments and that kind of thing. I expect to recoup that. So, if, if we put money into it, it's not like it would be a waste. Uh, I think we could recoup it because they're tournaments all the time through the Georgia Football Association and so on. I mean, it's a, it's a hot topic of increasing amounts of people interested in playing. And all we have in the county so far is hard, 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 which is not feasible. And as far as I watched the general road, the downside of that was, there, there really wasn't sufficient part of it. The main thing was no lighting. So, I mean, people play, uh, there's, there's a city here that plays a long view, uh, a few times a week. And, I mean, lighting, people work here today, promotion part, I might have to play at seven to ten at night. So, uh, lighting is a big deal for, you know, a usable recreational. Plus, if we build something where we can on the tournament, then we can expect to recoup money. If we don't, can we just put it through our quarters somewhere? Then it's just an expense. There, there, there's no upside, revenue collection side to that.
Yeah, so I guess, I mean, I guess we need to identify a site that would be appropriate for building a facility like that and really we could...
Well, first is put it in, learn positive revenue. Can we just put it in as positive revenue? Ron put it in as positive revenue. Uh, open lighting, uh, believe it or not, they put it in as positive revenue. And so, unless the sport crashes, uh, I think it would be an investment, not a downside. Plus, our, our citizen group wants it, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think if they were finding a site that would work, so, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what restrictions you have by the Pickleball Association or whatever that requires, what kind of site or that somebody who knows more about it probably could make a look into that.
Well, if I haven't, I know a lot of people in touch with, can we do it, so, I mean, the information is there.
Well, he, he didn't, he didn't make any requests in that direction, um, given this budget aside. So, I don't know if he's not prepared to present that at this point or...
Well, it's just something that, I mean, our citizens want and, and like Steve mentioned, I mean, everywhere I go, I imagine once a week, you know, well, which happened with the football court, I mean, a lot of folks are playing. And of course, every time I play, you know, I wonder, we're gonna get new courts and so on, so, I mean, the people are chomping at the bit to, to have more.
Yeah, we don't, we can have tennis courts that we can, you know, that takes quite a bit of effort.
Yeah, but it has to be something that has lighting and if we want to be a tournament investment, it has to be something where we could, uh, play at night and have tournaments, not just three courts or so, just somewhere.
All right, with the, um, on, on the Rent Department, they, they asked for an increase in their athletic, uh, program experience. Uh, they got to replace football helmets and pads and, I think, baseball helmets. Uh, all of that stuff have a period of time that they're useful and then they age out and it's time to be replacing those. Um, we got an increase in building repair maintenance, um, just trying to keep up the older gymnasium and some of the fields and, uh, keep things tidy out there. Um, and outside of that, anything else was just, uh, really a, a pretty small increase.
On the concession, they were going up what, seven? Where can I see that number? Thirteen thousand? Thirteen thousand. And then we're expecting on the revenue side to go up twenty thousand? So, I guess, I'm just trying to figure, is there equipment in that or is that what they thought the thing is gonna cost and the increased cost of what they're selling and then that's gonna be the difference in the profit margin?
That, that's right.
Okay.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're experienced in the increase in food costs. Uh, but they are projecting an increase in sales, uh, so, that's about where it is, uh...
What's the decrease in utilities?
Um, just more in line with where we are this year. So, just, um, kind of lined up to what our actual was. Uh, of course, that flows, like, depending on the weather and, uh, you know, we have been in the gymnastics center for a long time, so we didn't have enough information to, um, we, we made projections last year that might have been a little bit high, but they were running high last year, so it kind of went before we had there. And this year, um, not running quite as high, so, um, we're, uh...
Commissioner Reynolds, you had stated in the LED lighting, that that wasn't optimal for ball fields because it can blind you and stuff. Because I'm just, I'm, you, everywhere you go, you see people trying to change the LED and how much less energy, but you had, I guess, made the argument that it was, it wasn't all possible.
They're using it, but I, if LED lighting is on ball field, maybe it's just not a good idea.
I was just curious if there were other ways of saying, I mean, I'm fine with that. I'm just curious, because I mean, that's gotta pull a good bit of energy to, like, those ball fields.
Well, and we're gonna have to make some adjustments related to that because we, we were starting the, the, the poles, um, the lighting fixtures out there, some of them are not operating functional and they need to be replaced, so...
They're not making it. It was built thirty years ago.
No, so we were doing replacing with conventional light or we start replacing with LED lighting. And, uh, but that's something that's going to have to be done in the next few months. Um, so, I think y'all need to voice your opinion if you, if you really feel one way or feel the other. Uh, I'm a proponent of LED lights just because I think you get more light from them and I think they do save on energy. Uh, but that's just my personal experience. Now, I've never played under them, so I don't know. You know, I've never, uh, I'm too old to catch my ball now, so I haven't, I haven't catch one of the others, but, um, you know, I know under the old light system, uh, you've got dealing with spots and stuff like that. Uh, and lighting's come along, I think, in the last forty years or so. But that, that is something we're going to have to address in the Rent Department, so you're rather than lighting.
Well, I gotta believe they're probably gonna have a choice because, uh, they're, they're not going to make incandescent boulders anymore. They got a, a birthday the other day, a couple of years ago, stopped making. Of course, they don't use incandescent lighting. Sports fields haven't done that in thirty years or more. So, it's probably a cut down that we're gonna have to use those light ones.
Okay.
And that's, nothing was gonna be available as LED, so.
Okay, uh, Parks, we got the, um, food crews and, and the labor. And then we got, um, some building repair maintenance, um, we've got some structures that are eighteen that need some care in, uh, at Tanner Park more specifically, um, and some things down at McIntosh. So, we're, they're looking to do some painting and, um, some smaller projects and things like that that, um, we could not pull from slots. And then we do actually have an increase in utilities there. Uh, we had some higher utility bills that we're gonna kind of move that up a little bit and, um, cover up those costs.
Could you take into account if they happen to get those other watts online this year?
That's part of the issue, guys. They're gonna use natural water and those, those are actually gonna be full service, uh, sites. So, they're, they're gonna have the water hookup and the sewer hookup right there. So, we'll have, that's part of the issue is being able to, um, they put in a second system to handle all of that out there. But, uh, we definitely will increase our water usage with having somewhere between twelve and fifteen more sites.
With, uh, equipment repairs and maintenance, um, I, I, again, because I didn't attend what this was presented. Uh, so, equipment repairs and maintenance, the, uh, I mean, we've got more equipment than, than tractor down there now and so on. This is a, I'm talking, uh, I see ninety-eight hundred dollar T3s. I'm just curious as to what that is.
I need to check on that. I did know that we bought that, uh, tractor and the, and the, kind of like a bush hog mower down in McIntosh. And also when we were cutting all that with the lawn mowers, we were having to replace the blades about every thirty days just because of the sheer volume of what we were cutting. And now that we're cutting with that big mower, um, we haven't had to replace a set blade from yet and it's been running almost a year. So, I, I didn't know that we're saving some maintenance money there and, uh, so, but let me, let me check on that. Because that, that's what's happening there, that has a little bit of delay.
Well, we were also saying though, as my understanding from Mr. Skipper, that the lawn mowers themselves were completely wearing out because it was almost like some of them was having a bush hog per se.
Correct.
And now we have a bush hog. And I would assume we were cutting down, maybe even some labor costs too, but it doesn't shock me that it's, I'm not saying it's not bad. I'm just saying it doesn't shock me that it was a good bit of a cut because there were several components based off the presentation where I think we were gonna save money in the long run, not just the blades, is my point.
I, I think we are saving on labor too because we had a couple people running two mowers down there. It used to be still okay and now we can give it with more tractor.
The whole thing I know, and I was mentioning, but not a big deal, but when we had inmate labor, they didn't give up, they, well, they did, they didn't take care of equipment, the inmates, that type of racket and so on. Now we have the, the tractor that's designated for one employee to run it and, and it's better maintained, so.
And we're actually, I mean, the inmates are off the lawn mowers. They are still running wheelers and blowers and picking up trash and, and I think they are operating some of the ETVs. But, um, the lawn mowers and the tractors have gotten all off and that has helped with equipment repair maintenance.
Systematic changes are, and this is kind of, it was what we talked about before, as far as budgeting on the building side and on the equipment side. So, I know at McIntosh, I mean, the roof of that, uh, McIntosh or whatever, it needs to be repaired, the windows and that kind of thing. And we do want to preserve that. But can we, in, in looking at future ways to present in the budget, on the, can we set, can we come up with a system that, that might say that we have X thousand dollar worth of buildings and X thousand dollar worth of equipment? And so, we budget in an upkeep or depreciation or something on that? And we say, well, we're gonna budget in, I don't know, four point seven percent or whatever on upkeep on the building side and, uh, six point four percent or whatever on the, on the equipment side. Because, I mean, the tractor's gonna wear out, the bush hog's gonna wear out, and in six years or however, I mean, we're gonna face replacement. And rather than come up with, you know, eighty-seven thousand dollars of replacement cost, what time? If we budget for those repairs each year, we wouldn't be faced with that. It's kind of more, I mean, is there systematically some way to, you know, budget a certain percentage of the, um, of the inventory amount for upkeep and maintenance?
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like us to kind of work toward that, like we talked about before, both on the building side and on the equipment side.
Okay. Probably need a proceeds to think about or...
Yes, an industry standard somewhere. There's gotta be some industry information about that, you know, uh, like typical betting mark is, I mean, it's, it has no credibility at all, but I've been starting out, you know, four percent a year or something, uh, that we can put in the budget. can put in the budget.
Yeah, it'll take a little bit to, I mean, I'm, we got the building, obviously we got the building list and we got the, uh, equipment list, we got a bag, it's just a matter of getting it all put together and structured and then I would have to make it where I can separate an account by department where I can tell it's the department's free line, but yeah, I think, I think we can do something like that.
It would also have to be done in a manner that was supportive, with spots to back it up, that's another word you're gonna have, yes, you're pulling a building and the most important, but then when you have a failure, you may not have enough in a year to cover it, so you have to understand you're not really blowing your budget, the manner what you were putting in there is not being completely dependent upon spot, but I'm just saying, we also have to think that we don't want to look like we're blowing our budget, we had some of those, we should want to have spots to, to connect to it, I think, unless it's something really small.
Well, there's, there's another strategy that you buy over governments where they use a capital projects fund, um, and they set, you know, maximum amount of money per year aside out of the general fund to support, um, capital purchases that might have to incur between the time that it was originally purchased and the, the replacement date in spots, um, and you have some money available, so if you have some kind of failure or something breaks, then you got some funds to draw from there, and, uh, that's something I would like to see us move toward, um, possibly in the next budget year, um, it's kind of get started on that, so this, you know, doing, doing this exercise would be a good precursor into moving in that direction. All right, on the next page, we get to the, um, Parks, Forests and Nursery, um, that's, uh, part of that grant that we were talking about earlier helps, um, to fund this expense, but this is required, um, that we pay this every year, and then, um, we're actually going up on our, I mean, we're staying the same on our libraries, um, and then the concern to the FAG, um, not really much movement there other than the, uh, payment increases. Then on, uh, planning and zoning, uh, free builders is based on our population, so I guess we put a small increase in there for, uh, small population growth, and then, um, planning and zoning, code enforcement, um, all of that's related to, um, the payment increase, um, then we've got economic development, um...
One question on the code enforcement, so are we fully satisfied with that area or how, how many, make sure we have, that we got a new guy out there?
Yeah, we're, we're not, uh, we're not fully satisfied because of, uh, someone that was, uh, had illness and then, uh, we got, so there're probably two, I think there's two other, two or three other positions there, I think there's a, uh, code enforcement and then the planner and the engineer position, and they're all working right now, I think, and this, one of those they hired, they need to at least look last minute. Um, economic development, um, we got, I can't remember what else, but, yeah, other than that, too, it's not a great...
Well, we've done the sponsorship, we have an ad that we have to run, Junior Chamber.
Junior Chamber, okay.
Junior Chamber was the expense, but not, not all of it, but, um, it was just, it was back with that, but it was Junior Chamber or some other.
Don't we build some money in each year too for our, our board, for our development authority of board?
If they do need training, yes, that would probably be a good idea.
Uh, and then on, on debt service, we're essentially moving some money out of interest into, um, the capital or principal part of that, um, if we move on into that, at least, uh, purchase, our interest goes down and our principal payments go up, so the actual payment date about the time you have the class, like the, um, your system, you got them paying.
I would like to see us, if we have some additional revenues at the end of the year, um, I'd like to see us move toward adding the debt service into something that we're considering as well, so we're talking about, you know, helping our employees, giving back to them, many times we talk about we can get some projects done, and we talk about our reserves, I think our reserves are a healthy amount, so whether we're, you know, replacing that in the moment or something, I'd like to see us look at applying some of that money to the debt service to, uh, actually, you know, pay off some things more so than I have just necessarily going back in reserve, because I think we've got that fund at a very healthy amount, so it might be a good time to, to look at that as a possible option just in theory.
Okay, I will have to get some legal on that, since it's a lease purchase, I don't know if, then would they create payment penalties or, um, I don't, I don't know what our, it's been a long time since I looked at the agreement.
Well, in debt, in debt in general, even if it's not this particular, I mean, just debt in general.
Yeah.
Question, can we back up a second? What is under economic development, it says county, county development, hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Oh, yes, okay, I got those minutes too, that means the, uh, I'm sorry, that's the Carol tomorrow money, that's the money we do for the Fourth of July Symphony, uh, that's the Thomas Dorsey Festival, that's the funds we did for the Veterans Day, um, last year too, uh...
Our county, this is our county development?
Uh-huh, our county development.
Okay.
That's what that, um, all, all that, um, sponsorship of those kinds of programs.
Oh, okay, all right, I was, I didn't...
I have to re-remind a battering here too, but, you know, I would call that something else, Dave, but because, what'd you say, not governmental counting, but the charter whatever, so we have to name it that, but I would make this something different.
Yeah, and we look county out for, county development kind of threw me off, I'm like, I'm like, we got a county development, what's that?
That's why I made these notes right here, so, yeah, that's what that is, that's those Fourth of July, the Thomas Dorsey and Veterans Day.
Uh, and then that operating transfer out, uh, referred back to that, uh, grant fund, and that's the money that we set aside to fund the mobile processing for Carroll County Development. All right, so that's all of the general, I mean, um, now we can, we can get into the debt fund, um, that, we have been utilizing the debt fund to run drug court, and, uh, when we first started, I think that was a, a good place to run that through, uh, because studies funds, the debt funds are set aside to, um, provide drug triane and rehabilitation, um, but the use of the debt fund has been expanded now, uh, to, uh, include more than just the drug court, so you can, you can utilize that now for mental health court, you can utilize that for, uh, pain treatment court, uh, some of the juvenile wellness you can utilize it for, so, uh, the way I've set this up this year is, uh, we're going totally with debt receipts, sort of, the funds that are actually, they're sitting from the different courts and the municipal funds to go into the debt fund, and then down at the bottom you can see an operating transfer out to drug court, juvenile court, mental health court, now those go into the, into the debt fund, uh, and if you, if you wanna look, it's, um, the other, the debt fund, I mean, I'm sorry, grant fund is Fund Two Fifty, and it has two green bars and three light blue bars, uh...
That's, um, this, this page.
So, and if we're gonna look at these together and you can kind of see how the funds flow within the two, so, um, if you look at the top of the law grant fund, you'll see the forty-six, nine thirty-six at the bottom of the revenue for it, coming in for debt receipts from drug court, and then you'll see the forty-five thousand coming in for mental health court, and then you'll see the twenty-two thousand coming in for, uh, pain treatment and wellness court, so that's where the debt receipts are coming back into that grant fund, uh, that are flowing out over here out of, out of debt fund. Now, while we're on the grant fund, let's just go ahead and look, uh, you got all of the revenue coming in from the different grants, you got the sanctuary grant, you got the delinquent prevention juvenile grant, uh, you got a new grant for, for juvenile, uh, you got operating grant for drug court, an operating grant for mental health court, an operating grant for juvenile wellness court, and then the drug court participants actually pay the, um, to participate, so the fifty thousand from the back end there is what the drug court participants pay. Then you go down to the first section below and it's laying on drug court, those are the expenses related to running the drug court, so, um, the combination of the money that says out at the top and revenues, uh, will fund these expenses out of drug court, and then you have the same thing with mental health court, uh, you got the expenses associated with running it, and those expenses continue on to page two.
So we got a drug court, mental health court, CC, MAJ and juvenile, those would equal a one, six, six, five?
Correct, that's correct, all of the expenses associated with that, so at the end of the day, this fund will have grants flowing in, expenses flowing out, and there will be zero left at the end of the day, because you'll have, um, all of, all of the grants are reimbursed, so you have to pay the expenses, you have to follow those expenses with the court, and then the court reimburses it, so it comes back into this fund, um, paying those expenses.
So it's self-sustaining basically?
Self-sustaining, that's correct.
Okay, so the three hundred and eighty-five thousand change is bottom of the page under the debt fund?
Yes.
Okay, that is, that's actually, we just had to put it in the budget to show where the money's going, so that's coming out of the, all that's coming out of these grants, all right?
Not on the debt fund, and the debt fund money is coming from the court system, so every time the courts have a case, I guess, related to drugs, they have a fee associated with that, and so at the end of each one, uh, Mr. Lee submits us this period of state court money, uh, magistrate sends us debt receipt money, and then all the municipal send us debt receipt money, and it goes into this debt fund, and then we're gonna disperse that back out to this grant fund to cover the costs associated with drug court, pain treatment court and mental health court.
Okay, but it's not coming out of tax payer pockets, that's, that's where it goes?
Not, not unless they're drug...
Well, yeah, I mean, if they're lined up in court, play fine, it's coming out of their pocket, okay, all right.
All right, uh, next, we got solid waste fund, we got, um, hold, just a second, trying to get back to the solid waste, what we talked about. Uh, yes, okay, you have three hundred thousand, five hundred, okay, so how does this, uh, compare to what we went over twenty minutes ago about solid waste collection? Okay, on the general fund budget, yeah, where you see the tip and fees of two million dollars, yes, all right, that two million dollars comes back into the solid waste fund on the revenue side, under tip and fee, so part of the five million, three hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred dollars is the two million dollars that's being paid out of the general fund for Carroll County place.
Okay.
And then the rest of those tip and fees are coming to the City of Carrollton and the commercial, um, accounts that bring waste in there, and then the citizens that bring waste in there by the truck over, the train over, tire delivery, but a majority of that's gonna be, I guess in the City of Carrollton, make up a majority of that, probably in three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, um, the miscellaneous revenue is tires, and then we got, um...
You said, you said tires?
Tires, correct.
Eighty-four thousand dollars?
Yes, since she's been running those, uh, grants, we're getting that grant money from the, uh, the DORPA, that's our environmental protection agency, and, I mean, we're getting, we're getting the truck over the tires every time we run into those campaigns, it's about sixty, seventy, sixty thousand pounds, I think, she said that last...
I have a letter, I think, I may have announced yours.
Oh, that's okay, I mean, that's...
It was, yeah.
This is good?
I'll find it, I'll send it to you.
Yeah, well, we're, the, the, the additional part of that is the, the EPA is giving us the grant offset costs, so part of that, that EPA grant coming in, uh, and then, uh...
They collected, they collected in May of twenty twenty-one to November of twenty twenty-two two hundred and thirty-three tons of tires, they received about fifty-five thousand a star EPD funding to cover all recycling fees, this is definitely a beautiful offset for us, um, and, let's see, I think it was seven hundred and seventy-six Carroll County residents who participated in the event where they purchased the tires, which saved an estimate of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars in tire disposal fees. Hazardous waste collected five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine pounds, uh, paper shredding was twenty-five hundred pounds of recycling, and the glass recycling collected just at the middle road, the tire road, came to sixty-nine point six tons.
Because it's a tire, these, what you call them, where you bring your tire down to give them to somebody, it's like a haul tarp?
Right.
Those get, uh, those get a pretty cocker, that's, uh, keep Carroll's, you're doing what I think of this weekend, just bring your tire down.
Right.
I was a little confused and I don't think much on that, uh, so the general fund budget we showed four point oh seven one, and then this solid waste enterprise fund is five point four, and what's the connection between that, I know some of the revenue here goes over here, the enterprise fund is on, I'm figuring, trying to get a handle on, what's the difference basically between the five point four million we showed on the enterprise fund?
Trying to get a handle on what's the difference basically between the five point four million we showed on the enterprise fund and the four million seventy-one million we show over here in general fund?
So really, the only thing that ties from the general fund to the solid waste fund is the two million dollars in tip and fees. So the, so the whole thing that you send the million six fifty in the general fund, that's getting from the convenience center to the transfer station. And then the convenience center expense is, are the expenses related to running the convenience center. So the payment to S M M for labor, the water bill, electric bill, building maintenance, those kind of things. So that's really the, the expense in general fund related to the convenience centers. Getting the trash from the convenience centers and landfills. Then you pick up at the landfill where, where our transfer station is not a landfill, we call it a transfer station. And you got Carroll County bringing in two million dollars in tip and fees that come back into this revenue line on the solid waste side. So that's the connection. And then the waste associated with that that goes through the transfer station, then we have to pay to carry it from there to the Polk County landfill. And that comes down to the contractual services. So when we carry it from the transfer station to Polk County landfill, that comes down to contractual services at four million two hundred thousand that we pay G F L to do that. So when, when they pick up the trash that we transferred, they also pick up the trash that Carrollton's brought to the transfer station and all the, all the commercial customers. So the, the biggest increase in the, in the solid waste is the increase in contractual services to G F L, which are based on the contract that we put in place last year.
Okay. And so how's the two hundred and sixty-five increase compared to the hundred and fifty increase in the general fund?
Uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure I raised both of those on the C P I, uh, per se.
And those are two separate amounts? One's unincluded and the other?
No, they are, they are, yes, they are two separate amounts. They are not included in, they are... So if you wanted to know the total amount we paid G F L, if it was accurate enough, you would take the million six fifty in the four million two. And that, the total of those ten dollars would be what we paid G F L. Okay, listen.
Nine one one, okay.
And there's another one.
I thought that's the one we had this one. We have, um, that's the last one.
Um, yeah, yeah. Wait, wait a minute. I'm not, I mean, I've never seen that.
Kind of the shack.
Okay, so our final comment is that we need to per today, we're going to have a little more... And, uh, so the nine one one things come from the state of Georgia. And, um, the fee structure on that has not changed over the last few years. Uh, we're seeing a little bit of growth in those numbers, but not a whole lot. Uh, we're still one of the few nine one one centers that are, that is, it funds itself. Most counties subsidize their nine one one centers. So, uh, we may be coming to the end of that run. We may be in a situation next year where we have to fund some nine one one more out of the general fund. Um, but for now, we're, we're still waiting for the funding to come in, come in the nine one one. So our, our total revenue projected for nine one ones is two million, it's four point nine. Um, and there's been, um, our largest increase in budgets, um, is going to be related to payment crisis. Um, and we, um, we've got about six positions out there that we have not funded. First of all, we're having a hard time filling them. And second of all, we don't really have enough money in the budget to cover them. We're making that work from the time the end, we've got things where they function.
So, so there's six positions that's not funded?
Correct. Um, so, and, and that was part of making the budget work without having to ask the general fund for any additional, additional funding. There again, next year, we may have to come in at least one or two of those positions to keep our center operating the way it needs to.
Patricia, may I also let you know that it's not like we do fund them, they haven't been filled.
Yes, Patricia.
We can't find anybody to fill the spots. So it wasn't like we cut somebody out. It was just, if you stick the money in there, it sits and sits. So we should...
Okay.
So, so that's really the biggest change in, in nine one one fund is, is getting paid increases, which hopefully will help us retain the communicators that we have on the staff. So that is, that, that recodes my part. And, um, I have a list of questions that I'll call out later. And if you had any additional questions, feel free to call me or email me. And I'll be going ahead and try to get a response back out.
So at this part, again, I got opened up a very proud, put two dollars an hour in there for full-time employees. Um, and looking at some of our numbers, out of this budget, fifty-five percent is all related to public safety. But I think again, we should be very proud of that percentage. Um, this is a draft of our budget. It will be presented, um, in May second meeting. Then it may afford, I think it may sense for time to learn our legal order. Um, it will be advertised in all the public notices as required by law, which is section thirty-six dot eight one dash five, O C G A. And then June sixth, we'll actually have a public hearing that night. And then June sixth will be the adoption of the budget. So as Alicia just said, if you have any questions, please reach out to her or myself. I've made several notes too, so hopefully we don't, we, we caught up with your questions. We can get those, I'll answer back to you. If there's anything else, if not, I'll adjourn us.
Do we have another, like, we even set?
Uh, we had some tentative we set, but I don't really see a need. The, the feedback y'all gave was one that for a whole lot, I don't think there's any major changes for that, so. But we do have a public hearings too that, you know, we'll hear from the citizens, so if something helps from that.
So I just had some reminder, uh, April twenty-five, eight thirty-four, of the budget for...
Yeah, I don't think we need to have. I think we covered everything today. I think we just scheduled some things in because we're all so busy and making sure that we don't scramble and find more time. So you can take that one off for your calendar.
So what are we going to get to follow up on these things?
I'll try to have it by the end of next week.
Okay.
I mean, I, I'll start working on it immediately.
I, I guess, I'm, I'm just a little bit confused. I believe we used to meet a couple times about the budget thing. We're canceling all features. I mean, it's just like, oh, hey, I just heard about the budget. And we've got all these things and yet we're not meeting again, so.
We can, if people need, if they need, that doesn't mean, but I, I felt like they were pretty good and...
Oh, well, very well. It's just we had a lot of issues out there, but I, I guess, I probably would have another meeting to go over.
I mean, I'm fine with leaving something on the agenda and just canceling it if we don't need it. I mean, I know for myself, I'm going to go back and review everything and I'm going to work. Some of it is Cersei or whatever, but whether that comes back out at the same time we're voting on it or whether it comes out of the work session, I mean, I don't really care how it goes about. And the commission rental was right, we did only meet a couple of times. But I'm flexible. I know I'm going to do my job regardless of however that needs to come out. You know, I'm, I'm flexible with that, so. I mean, if we want to have another, if we want to keep it on the agenda, you know what I'm saying? And then have it, you know, if we don't need it or whatever, I don't care. I'm just speaking for myself.
I'm a believer.
I, I know we can ask questions. So, I mean, I guess it's, you know, seventy-seven, eight dollar budget. We meet once on it and then, oh, we'll ask a question if you want and then we'll work on it faster than I... I mean, I, it just seems like a real quick process.
Do you want to meet again next Wednesday morning? It's up to you. I don't necessarily have answers by then, but we did have another one scheduled ten thirty in May. There is feedback at the meetings. It's not like you don't have to get a speaker again. But I did gather here, there are things that you really have changes for or regulations that you want to take money from one thing to put to another, but...
We've got a schedule to make.
We have another tentative one in May, yes.
So that might be the only...
I would say for us, that, that would give Alicia time for us to talk, talk to her, get everything together. And then we can come back for probably a short day to get back. Well, a couple more questions before we get into handling this out. Uh, so the nine percent basically increase in personal services. Uh, and I'm, I mean, fine for, as I always have been, giving employees an increase in a lot, a lot. Uh, what is that based on though? I mean, we just throw the nine percent out there, two dollars an hour because that's what Carroll City did? Or, I mean, do we have any, I need to, I mean, benchmarks or whatever that we're saying? We need to increase it two dollars an hour versus four dollars an hour or whatever based on what? I mean, is, what's, what's the background in that?
Well, there was about a nine percent increase, the inflationary increase this, this year. So it was kind of off to the line with that inflationary increase. So that was the kind of strategy behind that. But the fact that Carrollton City, I mean, I think that the sheriff's office came from the point that they wanted to stay competitive. And, and it just happened to be that two dollars an hour across the board weren't to be within that nine percent. So it's kind of where we were thinking for the inflationary increase. So that, that was the strategy behind coming up with that.
I mean, that, you know, ties very well to whatever credibility you put on this. I mean, the social security increase, I mean, I think it went up eight point six percent or whatever. I mean, uh, well, I guess, the money should be there if they have it. But, uh, my other question is, since we've had, we had personal services budget last year, of course. Uh, but we've had so many vacant positions that unable to fill them and that kind of thing. As part of that global information that I've asked for on the front end, do we know kind of total dollar amount in personal services that we have launched because of unfilled positions and so on from, from our current budget?
Yeah, I can get that to the point. And, and hopefully, I mean, the objective is here that we get our arrangements competitive enough that some of those positions get filled.
If, if that is in fact the reason, I mean, I do ask it, I mean, I'm, I'm just remembering that I want to be competitive. Because I, we don't have any studies or whatever to give me data otherwise. But, but the information you presented here so far, Alicia, I mean, it was very good information. And I really appreciated it because you had surveyed some other counties. You found out what other counties pay for certain positions, as you'd say. And okay, based on the five other counties that I contacted, you know, here's where we stacked up. And that was great information. Uh, we don't have that listed on, but, uh, I guess I, I, I just like benchmark information. And I don't, I don't feel like I have that now, but I, I do feel, yes, we need to give an increase. But sometimes when I go to department heads or whoever and, and say, man, why can't you fill those positions or whatever? Uh, what I hear is it's not altogether the, the pay increase, it's, it's other things as well. So I, I guess throwing money at a problem is that don't solve the problem as far as us being able to get employees. Is, I mean, can we hire tax assessors now that we're going to pay two dollars more an hour? Or is that not going to help? I mean, can we, you know, hire C O's because we're going to pay two dollars more an hour? Or are we still going to have ten vacant positions out there? I mean, how much is this going to affect our problem?
I think it will help in the tax assessor, speaking with him, he feels like it will help.
I don't think a department head turns this down.
I, I don't think, I don't know if it's going to help with C O, just because that's a job that not a lot of people want to take anymore. That's one I don't know how to fix. Um, and I, I think it's more than, it's not just the Carroll County problem. It's, uh, it's across the state. Whereas the tax assessor situation is the Carroll County problem. Other tax assessor departments are full. So it's not that people don't want to be tax assessors, they just want to be tax assessors and get paid more than, than what they're paid.
So for the departments in the county that have the most vacant positions, do we have benchmark salary information that says, ah, for tax assessors, we need to increase them from, you know, forty thousand to fifty-three thousand or something? Or for this department, we need to increase it four fifty an hour or whatever? Do we have those or are we just saying two dollars an hour, that ought to fix it?
Uh, well, we're saying two dollars an hour because that's really all we can afford. Um, but I think Hubert does have a number on the tax assessor, of what would help him. I, I think Otis knows what the state is paying, he knows what other agencies are paying. But he also knows that they're all, um, understaffed too. So I don't know that, that, that he knows the resolution. Um, I think the sheriff's office has a good idea of what other, other people are paying. Really, at, at the sheriff's office, it's jailers, which is a similar type job to a C O, uh, which is there again, people just don't want to do that job. Um, but I think the sheriff's office does have some comparative helpers. Um, and I can, I can ask for those. Um, and I think that's going to be where you're going to see a majority of our vacancies between the sheriff and the C O, probably the tax assessor. of our vacancies between the sheriff and the C O, probably the tax assessor, um, I can't think of another area. And as far as other things that cause us not being able to hire people, I personally ran into a situation where I tried to hire somebody who had a lot of account payable experience with another government agency, and, um, they got, I'm trying to remember now, but it was about six weeks a year of P T O, and starting out, we had less than two weeks for the first four years, so, yeah, there's some other things, um, that, that we could do, um, and I mentioned that to the chairman as a concern that I have, and I mentioned it to H R as a concern that I have, um, so, um, yeah, I mean, there's some other things we can look at as far as retention and those kind of things. I don't know what kind of things you're hearing from the department heads, but if you could make a list out of, maybe we can address them and determine whether there's things we can start, I, you know, a lot of these things, you can't go from two weeks of P T O to six weeks of P O in one year, but can you go from two weeks to two weeks and two days, to two weeks and four days, to two weeks and five, to, to get to three weeks, and then maybe you get your, start with people at three weeks, and your people will then get over a certain amount of time, uh, more than that, um, or maybe it's something we don't wanna do, maybe we don't wanna do it, but I, I'm, I'm really open to doing anything that would, would help.
I'm, I'm, I feel, you know, I had a great presentation, great information, all that, I just feel not having talked, as you all have to department heads individually, and so forth, the process of getting this together, that I, I feel like I'm operating in a vacuum a good bit, and I, so I, I have no clue as to whether, uh, in six months, we're gonna say, ah, the two dollars an hour was what we thought would fix it, and lo and behold, it's, we were right and it fixed, or if we're gonna be sitting here six months from now saying, man, I still got eight positions over here, and I have people over there, and so on, because we don't know what the problem is, or because we don't have benchmark data that says, instead of two dollars an hour increase, we should be giving six dollars an hour increase, or, because, or instead of giving two dollars an hour increase over here, we need to do something else over here, I mean, I, I just, I feel lost, I, I, I guess I'm leaving it up to, to you folks then, and, and I'll be voting for the budget somewhat in the dark, because I don't know what will fix it, but I hear two dollars an hour is gonna fix it, so.
I'm not saying two dollars an hour will fix it, but I'm saying it's another step.
But how, where...
Well, Commissioner Reynolds is saying, we all in theory know we're making a step forward by giving more money, right? If we don't know where we think the end goal is, if money was no option to bring everyone up to the standard of, the industry standard in each department, we really never know how much of the stride forward we're really taking. If it's two fifty, we need to be at, we're given two dollars, we can get real excited, but if it's six fifty and we're given two dollars, we know we're making a step forward, but we're still way off on the six fifty. I think in summary, that's what you're conveying, yeah?
And, and I, I mean, I'll be glad to get some, get some data together, the thing I see is that the end number keeps changing, so when you say, that's where we're going, when we get right here, you know, so, you know, it's, it's a...
And still, we're less talking simply about dollar per hour, and like I said, other, other things might matter, and I don't know about that either, I mean, other than sporadic information.
Well, the one thing that we need to put a value on to, to market, as I have said over and over, is we talk about these insurance premiums on the employer side that keep skyrocketing, we're trying to do everything we can to control that. We're not passing that on in the form of a deductible, in the form of a bare, uh, premium plan, we're not passing it on for maximum out-of-pocket, so we are evolving that and not passing that on to the employee, and I'm proud of that, but in theory, the employee probably just looks at it and says, I have insurance this fiscal year, and I have insurance this fiscal year, when the reality is the board, on behalf of the taxpayers, has absorbed half a million dollar increase, that has a value to it, to go along with the two dollars per hour that they got, so to me, that's another area we need to focus on as well, in expressing the value, not just in what having insurance is, but every year, we're absorbing the employer portion, how much of that, that we, we didn't pass anything on, and what was that value to you and your family as well?
And that's showing on the paycheck.
That's what, that's what I was alluding to earlier, just what you just said, that if you have to look at the total package, and Alicia and I talked about this, the, the older employees' families look at it, they understand, the twenty-five-year-old or the twenty-three-year-old that still mows insurance doesn't care about that, he wants to know how much money am I gonna make per hour, so it, it's, as the workforce matures, that's where they start going, hey, you know, I have, I have a pretty good deal here, and I threw it away, maybe I need to go back for a good deal.
But sometimes, you don't know what you don't know, I agree with what you're saying, but that younger person, you're constantly throwing it in their face, whether they like it or not, that they've got insurance, or they don't want it, still, when you become of age, and you have a family, or whatever you need, here's the value in that. We get so stuck in just a dollar an hour, two dollars an hour, it's like, that's all we feel like we're approving as a governing board, I'm just talking about, some of this is the man, we're all saying the same thing, it's just in different ways, but having a list, besides just the fact we did two dollars an hour, we did something to save the average family this amount by not passing anything on, on the, on the employer side of the premium increase, just adding up all these different things, um, the stability of government, you know, we're not as fluid as the, the marketplace, if you're in construction, if it rains three days and you can't work, versus if you work for the government, you're gonna get paid all three days, I mean, there's a lot of things that I think make us an attraction, uh, but we've gotta do a, a, continue to do a good job, we've been doing that, and doing even better job of really coming out what those numbers are.
And I do think that, uh, pay increases certainly are very, I mean, the governor at the state level gave five dollars a year, but each of these across the board, uh, I hear he's gonna get three thousand across the board again the next budget year, whatever, so pay increase is part of it, it's just, I, I feel kind of blind because that, that man be all in the picture, plus I don't know where we should apply that, is, is, you know, do we wanna get more in certain areas where we are, uh, incurring substantial personal deficits, how do we stack up to our competition, and I, I don't have any information on that, so.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll answer that and get it to you.
Yeah, I can, I can. One question, you were talking about Mr. Hubert wearing tax assessor, so he thinks that we get that two dollar raise, that we're gonna be competitive, hire people, and then we can cut down some of that outside labor that costs we get?
I think, when he and I talked about it a few weeks ago, he felt like two dollars an hour would help him considerably, um, but...
Just you can get one example?
Yeah, there again, you don't always know, I mean, people will tell you, well, I'm paying this, I can come work for you, and then you say, well, I'll pay you this, and, oh, well, yeah, but I need, you know, do something else.
Or they find out they have to, they have to get out from behind the computer screen and actually go out on the side and look at something.
Right.
That's, that's right. Or, I mean, conversely, if our, our workforce is trending from fifty-plus-year-old staff to a younger and younger workforce, and we're trying to attract a twenty-five to thirty-five year olds who don't care about the benefits and really don't want them, then we have data that says where we're at in that transition, and should we then be reducing benefits and increasing dollar per hour to offset that? So, we're gonna...
And I think that's an option, but I also think when you go down that road, you have to be very careful that everyone that has insurance can't be someone that's sick constantly, you know, the problem, you wouldn't be able to afford that at all, so you've gotta have healthy people buying into it as well, and by and large, if you're younger, you're, in theory, you're gonna have less health problems, so I think you're on the right track, yes, we need to look at all the trends and things, but with as many employees as we have, we gotta be careful that we don't say, okay, we'll do this and give you five more dollars an hour, and then the next thing you know, everyone who's taking out insurance is someone that's sick, I mean, that also gives unsustainable model as well, so I think it's give and take with both.
And then what do you do when they get twenty-eight, and they're married, and their wife gets pregnant, and they need insurance, or you're gonna give them a five dollar an hour cut in pay when they sign out for insurance?
Yeah.
So that's, that, that in my mind's been the hardest thing to try to figure out how to manage, and people wanted to opt out, so I think that's why we, in addition to what you're saying, you're exactly right, if your whole group is sick, and, and you don't have the wealth that people own for group, it's gonna, you're gonna struggle.
Yeah, we talked about this with Derek, because there were some places where we're doing that, and all of a sudden, that situation comes up, so what you did...
My bad.
Well, I'll, I'll get these answers as soon as I can, and, uh, send them by ten, and then we'll plan on that May day, the free convening, and, uh...
The May day?
Yes, I think that's giving them time to get the information together.
Okay, so, just to be sure, when the April twenty-fifth date is...
Cancelled.
Cancelled, and what date is it in May?
May tenth.
May tenth, that's right, that's it, okay.
Award-winning Claire Mingham says May tenth.
Right, so is that, do we have time for that, or we'll, we'll find out, I guess?
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, let's say nine o'clock. You're two.
Thank you for the presentation.
Yeah.
Lots of homework to go and read all this now, I mean...
What, just a question, Tricia, I have a little homework.
Yeah.
Okay, so now I'm gonna turn the meeting now, correct?
Yep.